Good evening, everybody. Planning Board meeting for March 8, 2021. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and has been conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed on the WebEx link that is provided on the town website. With that said, Nora, would you please call the roll? Hello, Nora.
Sorry, I was muted. Mr. Diddy.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigiri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez.
She's muted.
Okay, she's here, we can see her. Is, has Ms. Jane joined us yet? Mr. Mandel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Von Akin.
Here.
Okay, we have a announcement that we're reading now at meetings. This announcement is for members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and selected to use the phone option for audio. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting. Rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. And also present, we have Ms. Pavate, Mr. Cagiano. I'm not sure I saw him, if Mr. Cagiano was with us.
Mr. Holloway and the Board Attorney, Mr. Wenzel.
That's correct, thank you very much. Okay, would everybody please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. On today's agenda, we will have one resolution for Tommy's Tappet Tavern. We also have a presentation on the electrical vehicle charging recommendation. And then we have an application which we will get to after that. As a reminder, during our applications, we will stop our last witness. If, let me rephrase. We will stop the application at 10 o'clock or allow no additional witnesses after 10 o'clock, rather. And we will make a public portion available at that time before we carry the application to a later date. So with that said, let's get started with our agenda. The first is the resolution on application number 20:530. This was done by the Minor Site Committee. Mr. Dinsmore, would you like to take it from here?
Well, certainly, is there a member of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee that would like to forward to approve this resolution? For a motion?
I can make the motion to approve the application. Am I, can you guys hear me or am I echoing? Am I good?
You're good.
I move to approve application number 20:530, Tommy's Tavern and Tap, 1900 Route 10, Block 176 lot, colon 3, 4, 7, 8, and 10 Minor Site Plan.
Do I hear a second from the other member? Who is that attended that meeting? Mr. Dede?
I can second that, yeah.
Ms. Jolie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Diddy.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, nicely done, sir. Moving on to the next portion of our agenda, we have a presentation by one of the work groups out of our Planning Board. So, Mr. Mandel, I believe you're going to present. Do you have any other members with you who will be presenting with you?
No, I'll be the only one presenting.
Okay.
So I need to be able to share my screen, I guess.
You can share now.
Okay. Does everybody see them?
I can't see it yet, Steve.
Let me see you, Steve.
Okay, I see it, so I don't know why not.
It's coming down, Steve. We can see your WebEx screen.
Okay.
And there's the presentation.
There we go. The modern world, yes. Okay, I want to thank the Green Team. Judy Hernandez did dual duty. Matt Kavanaugh, and of course, I had some pretty good guidance from Ms. Pavate. It's important to know the history of electric vehicles just in brief. And what was interesting here, as you can see, I borrowed this slide from the Parsippany Green Team. Electric vehicles go back into the mid 1800s, which was a real surprise. What happened to those was Henry Ford, back in 1908, came up with the Model T. And since gasoline was a lot more available than was electricity at that point, the gasoline automobile came of to be. Moving ahead, in the 70s, the electric vehicles were like that little one on the left. And now we have all sorts of various trucks, cars, electric vehicles. Electric vehicles are very important. Gasoline, of course, is a scarce resource. Electricity is way cheaper than gasoline. And in fact, the price of gasoline is now, I noticed today, some stations were over $3 a gallon. That will make it even better. There's less pollution with electric vehicles. The maintenance is significantly less. Basically, with an electric vehicle, you're changing tires, brakes, and I guess putting windshield wiper fluid in. We eliminate the need for foreign oil, of course. Produce less CO2. And of course, you reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. Where are we headed? This is key. By 2035, all new cars and passenger trucks that will be sold in California will be zero emission vehicles. That means either they'll be electric, EV, or hydrogen fueled. In the automotive world, as California goes, so goes the rest of the country. Tip, and that was one of the things that the prior administration was fighting, was to get rid of California being able to establish rules on their own. Never happened. So if California rules this, what will happen is the other states will follow. In New Jersey, Governor Murphy has set a goal of registering over 300,000 electric vehicles by 2025. Last year, New Jersey offered a $5,000 rebate for the purchase of an EV. And it's expected that this program will be renewed in the budget that begins in July. New Jersey does currently offer rebates for the installation of EV chargers. Also, New Jersey does not charge sales tax on electric vehicles. In addition, several towns have already enacted ordinances governing EV charging. Give you an idea where it's going, as you go through this, the various manufacturers, notice the dates. 22, 25, 30. That's where all of the automakers are going. So there will be electric vehicles. When you go out to buy a new car, it's going to be harder and harder to find a non-electric vehicle. That brings up the fact of charging. There's basically three types of charges, Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. Level 1 is 120 volts plugging into your normal household current line. Level 2 is a 240 volt, typical for electric dryers or air conditioning systems in a house. Also stove top units. And Level 3, which is a DC charger, a supercharger, typically as a commercial installation. Give you an idea of difference. Level 1, the type that you would just plug into your normal wall outlet, adds about four and a half miles per hour of charge. Level 2, which is the 220 volt charger, typically adds a neighborhood of 25 miles per hour of charge. Whereas the Level 3 chargers, you're getting 200 miles of charge in about 15 minutes. What's important to note with the, that charging is that the typical car now is getting about 250 to 300 miles of range on an electric vehicle. Parsippany happens to be right in the middle of 250 mile radius of Washington and Boston. So coming up, Parsippany is going to be a key location for fast chargers or their superchargers. This is what a gas station looks like today. This is what it's going to look like in the future. Slowly, the gasoline is going to be replaced by a electric vehicle charging station. Give you an idea of what's happening today. New Jersey ranks 25th in the country with Level 1 chargers. Ranks 21st in the country with Level 2 chargers. But actually ranks ninth in the DC fast chargers, which is what I indicated before, as we were talking about Parsippany being right in the middle of that zone for those long distance rides. Our master plan calls it out that we have to consider parking regulations that encourage or potentially require these facilities for the construction, redevelopment of large scale projects such as mixed-use developments, multifamily developments, and office campuses. Today in Parsippany, these are the public charging stations. I guess start at far right at the bottom, at the Wawa, you have the Tesla Supercharger. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. Going up from there, the JLR Parsippany Station, that happens to be at the Land Rover dealer, ADP and Parsippany Road, Tiffany's, and the MCC2, the Morris County Campuses, EV1 and EV2. All of those others are Level 2 chargers. So what I'm proposing that the Board suggested the township is that we adopt ordinances governing the required installation of EV charging and/or the infrastructure for same. For multiple family dwellings of five or more units, that 5% of the parking spaces rounded up to the whole number be equipped with at least a Level 2 charger. In addition to this being an amenity for the renters, it also allows the management to monetize the charging stations. For single-family dwellings, as they get built, that the garage or carport would have a 240 volt, 60 amp GFI, either outlet or junction box. This would allow the homeowner to install a Level 2 charger at a future date. Also, the total electrical service to the home should have the capacity to handle the load. And I believe that should be a 200 amp service box. The reasoning for this is that the cost during construction for this would be about $300 to $800. After construction, if the homeowner wanted to put in a a charger, just the installation of the line would be $800 to $2,000. So a significant saving for the homeowner. For office buildings, shopping centers, et cetera, that 3% rounded up to nearest whole number of parking spaces be equipped with at least a Level 2 charger. And lastly, for charging stations, what I'm calling the 21st century gas station, we should come up with regulations so that they don't become one-offs each time that somebody proposes to install this. In fact, I, you know, I think this may be a a very good business for someone in the future to the intersection of 80 and 287 to put in a supercharger network and a McDonald's or Starbucks or some other quick lunch type of place so that as you charge your vehicle, which will take you in the neighborhood of a half hour, as you plug in, you go in and you have your coffee and your sandwich and you're on your way. With that, I'll try to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If I pull into Wawa to charge my car.
Yes.
What do I get charged?
That's between, that's between you and Tesla. You have a, an account with Tesla at Wawa. And your car is recognized by the Tesla software. And they have some rate that they're charging you. And it varies depending the location, the time of day, and also Tesla, from what I understand, and I don't own one, runs deals where they'll give you free charging for some periods of time.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, from what I understand, they charge you in the neighborhood of 20 to 25 cents a kilowatt hour. Whereas we're paying now, well, at home, I'm paying nine cents a kilowatt hour. The typical person will be charging at home. The information I've seen says that the average person who owns an EV charges outside of the home about three times a year.
I have a question. It's Bruce. First of all, thanks for this. You did a great job with this. And thanks to the Green Team as well. Are there, just for my, my information and maybe everybody, are there sort of standardized chargers that, because we, I don't think we want to start taking sides with branded charging. How would we navigate that in a way that's best for the users and, you know, and for Parsippany?
The, the various companies that sell the chargers, they fit, quote, "all of the vehicles that are currently out there." So that you don't have a problem. If you, if you have a Tesla and you pull into the Land Rover dealership, you're able to plug in. If you have a Honda, you cannot go to the Tesla Supercharger. Those are dedicated.
Okay.
But there are superchargers. Okay, Tesla made a deal with the state of New Jersey. They're installing supercharging stations along the Parkway and the Turnpike. Part of that deal is they had to put in superchargers that, besides being Tesla superchargers, would also be superchargers for the other varieties.
Okay.
That is one of President Biden's things. He wants to, I forget the exact number, but he wants to put in, I think, something like a half a million chargers over the next number of years to cover the entire country. Okay, Bruce?
Yes, no, thank you. That answered my question.
Hi, Stephen.
Yes.
Can you go into a little more detail about what your recommendation is for the commercial sites, retail sites or office building sites?
My recommendation there is that 3% rounded up to the nearest whole number of parking spaces have at least Level 2 chargers.
And, yeah.
So in other words, you pull into the new, the new ShopRite, because of course, this would apply to the new ones. And you have an EV, you'd be able to plug in. And while you're, you're shopping for your hour, your two hours, you'd put in another 50 miles of range into your vehicle.
Okay, and what, what would trigger, is this just for existing sites? Is this for just new sites?
I would say this is new. I can't imagine that we could retroactively do this. I'll leave that to the Board Attorney, but my guess is you can't tell people that, that, you know, ShopRite, that you have, I don't know, 300 spaces, so you have to put in nine EV chargers. They may want to put in EV chargers. And again, we should have, the township should have the rules for what these are and how they, you know, they're constructed, because I think it would be good business for a ShopRite or a little lidle to incorporate these in their plans.
One more question for me, Bruce.
Go ahead.
Do, do you know, I don't know if it matters initially, but for all of our own backgrounds of information, do you know how much it'll cost to swap out a Number 2 for a Number 3? Because at some point, you, you know.
Significant.
There, it is.
Well, Number 3, remember, is a DC. So you're talking about a 480 volt DC line. So, superchargers are significant.
So, does it make sense? I'm just thinking out loud, to mandate to a new, a new development or redevelopment, as we're seeing come through here this year, that they go with the Number 3, because the demand's going to probably get them there in five to seven years anyway. So why would they want to incur all that extra expense? Or do we just present it as an option?
Well, of course, it's always an option, but the, the Level 2, let's take any of the, the recently approved multifamily developments that we've put in. If you happen to have an EV and you're a, a renter in that development, you pull in and you plug in your vehicle and it's going to charge. Now, depending on, th, th, this is where it gets really interesting. All of the commercial EV chargers that the developers can buy, they come with all sorts of software. So your phone controls it. In addition to charging you by the kilowatt, if you're fully charged and you're still hanging in there, they're going to charge you for occupying the space. So in other words, Bruce, you pulled in and your car's down about 100 miles. You plug it in and you get notice, you know, three hours later, four hours later on your phone that your car is fully charged. If you'd say, screw it, I'm gonna, you know, leave it there all night, you're going to be charged for just occupying the space.
Okay.
I mean, the software has gotten very sophisticated as they've figured this out. Now, the developer, you know, as I indicated, they're going to buy the power that 10 or 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and they're going to be selling it to their residents or giving it away. It's their choice at 25 cents an hour. So they're going to repay, you know, be able to pay off and actually have a profit center for this.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I missed that, Steve. So should we not be recommending Level 3? Or should we?
I don't think we can recommend Level 3. I think, I mean, that would be, I think Level 3 is going to remain as a as a business, you know, like the Wawa. But I envision the Level 3 being more like the rest stop on the Garden State Parkway, where you can go in and, you know, get a real sandwich and sit down and have a cup of coffee. And they probably have internet access. And, you know, the half hour later or the 40 minutes later, your car's fully charged and you take off again. Or, since we are, if somebody was going from Washington to Boston and we're about halfway, maybe they want to pull into the Holiday Inn or the Hilton or the Sheridan, charge their vehicle for the evening and then go on their way. So, you know, it, it puts Parsippany in a nice little place.
So, so on the same lines, right? At least in the shopping centers or, you know, the dwellings where we are letting 300 units, 200 units. If they put in two charging stations with Level 2, I mean, they'll barely get any car charged, you know, in a 24-hour period. They have 200 units, 200 families, you know, maybe 10% people have EVs, you know? Again, I'm just making.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting 5%. Yeah. And the, the real, here, here's the thing. How many, forget about the pandemic. How many miles did you drive a day, Neil?
I drove about 60, 70 miles.
So you'd have three days before you'd have to charge your EV. You see, that's the whole thing. How many people drive 250 miles in a day?
Yeah, no, no, I, I see that. But, but if my car takes four hours to charge, I'll be occupying that station for four hours.
Yes.
In an apartment building, you know, so.
That's correct. And what'll happen, my, my belief is that over time, there'll be more and more of these having to be installed. I think it would be ridiculous to try and say 100% of the parking spaces at this point should have EV chargers.
Yeah. 3% is fine, but I think if they have superchargers or Level 3, I think then we can service more of them again.
Oh, you can, definitely.
You know, Steve, I could see there being an amenity package in some, some, you know, upscale multifamily buildings where it's like valet. You know, they could, they could take your car for you and get it out of the space so, you know, you're in bed and they do it.
I like that, Susan.
That would be a nice service and then they could get more efficiency.
Yeah, you pay $5 more and you take a Level 3 charger.
Or, or we'll, we'll move your car into the spot when one's available and we'll move it out when it's done. Yeah. Steve, so, you, you know, if, if we assume that we're going to put 5% of the spots as EV in a multifamily unit, and I think that's really where, where a big part of this is going to come from. You know, how many, how many vehicles then are we charging in a week to, to go off of that he's, Mr. Dade, he's question? So, you know, based on the example we're going, let, let's say you're, you're consuming 40 or 50 miles a day. So you're, you're charging every, every three to four days. So twice a week, maybe. You know, how? You know, h- how many space, you know, are we satisfying the potential need with this requirement? Or is, is this really just, uh, you know, putting us? Putting a sign on, on the door saying that we have it?
Well, that's an interesting point. I mean. The um. The buildings we've approved so far, I guess, other than Johnson Road, they've been what, uh, three hundred? Approximately?
Uh, it turns of total parking spaces?
Yes.
Uh, somewhere in that range, sure.
So they'd have to have fifteen, which in most cases would mean they'd go to sixteen because most of the commercially.
Mm-hmm.
Units are double-sided, so they'd have sixteen spaces. That means.
It could service roughly forty-five, fifty cars per week.
Per week without any problem, yes.
Mm-hmm. So that represents now about twenty percent. Uh, we're saying fifty, so that's one-sixth of the, of the total parking spot.
And there are more spots than there are apartments.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to work out, you know, is, is this over-representing any? Is it on target, you know, how, how did we get to five percent?
Uh, you, you know, swag.
Let me comment, mention something.
Chairman?
If you're gonna have.
These were. I'm sorry.
Uh, let, let's go with Mr. DiPiero first. I think he was speaking first.
These, these um, charging stations are taking parking spaces, which normal cars, I'm sure will not be allowed to use.
Correct.
So then that means we will have to require additional parking spaces. Um, to meet our, our mandate for so many parking spaces per apartment. We're taking up more real estate uh, by doing this if we, if we overestimate how many charging stations we, we wanna have.
That's a good point, Mike. Uh, I don't think you'd have to put in more spaces because these are still the vehicles that are at the. At the complex, we'll call it.
I'm concerned about the five percent has a swag. Um, maybe we should not require something that large right now. Uh, because we, we are gonna require some of these places are meeting the parking requirements just barely. They meet the number that's required uh, for the number of apartments that they're building. Now we require a five percent of charging stations, they need some more regular parking for all, all the other apartment owners.
I don't think so. Susan, could you comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Councilman DePiero is correct. It is a balance. Um, you know, whether it's five percent or three, I've seen three percent in some areas. Um, to my knowledge, nobody's come up with sort of a magic standard. Um, as to, you know, how you can predict which of, how many of your residents are gonna have electric cars and how many are not. I mean, I will say that the RSIS standards that, that are used for all the multifamily do bake in some visitor spaces. So there's a little bit of a cushion already. You know, I, I, I guess I don't have a firm answer for Councilman as to whether five percent is too many or three percent.
My good feeling is I'd rather ease into it and not require some number. But maybe find five years or seven years from now, but maybe too many right now.
A- and, uh, Ms. Vate, do you have an opinion on Mr. DiPiero's question about whether or not these, the uh. Electric vehicle only spots would count as parking towards the total number or? Do, because they're only allowed to be used by certain vehicles, does, you know, do we need to add more parking spots?
That's my.
No, I mean, I, I think they count. They count toward your, your resident parking spaces because you're assuming that they're serving residents who, you know, who have electric vehicles. The question is, you know, achieving that balance of are, are you overcounting the number of residents who are gonna have EVs? And, or taking spaces away from, from people who don't. Um, and, and I think it's something that, that the next step of this whole process in Parsippany would be. Um, that Steve could make a presentation in the Township Council and then the Township Attorney is gonna need to get involved in terms of actually writing ordinance. So I'm sure that, you know, that they will be looking around um, at what other communities are doing and kind of best practices to make sure that the numbers are right. But I think it's a great start.
Uh, just as a, you know, a point here, uh, for Mr. DiPiero. Handicap spaces count in the total of spaces, so the EV would be just like the handicap spaces.
That's fair.
Fine, I have no problem with that, uh, unless we estimate. Optimistically, too many charging stations.
Well, but tell you what, by twenty forty, you'll probably need almost a hundred percent charging stations, but, but not there.
Forty, I won't be around.
Oh, come on, Mike. I have a date on the, the Nolan twenty forty.
Uh, Ms. Hernandez, uh, I, I saw you wanted to comment before.
Um, yeah, we kind of went over, we were talking about what Mr. DePere was talking about. Um, a lot of spaces and what's the percentage? And I think, you know, stick a flag in it like we're doing now, we're, and. Whether it's three or five, maybe three percent, w- we were looking at ordinances in the area. Um, Mars Township just did, did this in December and Westfield, I think, was the one Mr. Mandell had, so. Um, I think it's a good conversation that we're having and yeah, maybe we'd go three percent and then instead of five. But I, I think in short amount of time, we're gonna wind up increasing that. That, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, so, so I, I'm trying to figure out what our next steps here are. Uh, I think you were getting to it a little bit, Ms. Favate. Um, I would like to also see i- in the presentation. Um, what are the towns that have passed these regulation or these resolutions? And what was the, you know, what were the percentages they used? Um, you know, to help build the story as to why the recommendations that we're making are the right ones, you know, I want to build that story up a little bit more.
Uh, I believe Ms. Favati has said that there is a. But what's the correct word? A um, standard um. Form that's been floating around in the state.
Yeah, I, I think there's a model.
Model, that's what I was looking for.
Been using and, and I know to, to Ms. Hernandez's point, I, you know, I know Morris Township, Westfield, Adam is getting ready to adopt one. So there, w- we're definitely not, you know, the first to do this, which is good. Um, you know, we can look to see what our neighbors are doing.
Yeah, I'd just like to make that part of our presentation, uh, much in the same way. We ask that. Our applicants provide us with all the information. I'd like to go to the council with all the information. They shouldn't have to do too much of this homework on their own.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
I, I, first off, I want to congratulate Mr. Mandell on the Green Committee uh, for an excellent job, a great start. Uh, secondly, I want to say that from my point of view, I mean, a relative, close relative that has an EV. And we constantly talk about what he uses the car and when he needs to charge. Also having several businesses that use EVs. Ninety-five percent of the time, if you need a charge, it's on a local trip. So if they go to the. That they don't need more than twenty-five miles to get back home. That's probably ninety-five percent of the time people have a car. Misjudged how much uh, energy they needed to do this, so to be able to get a top-up or a, not a top-up necessarily, but at least enough to get home. To their regular spot is, is a start. But more importantly to me, the whole point of this is not so much to have X number of. Uh, of the ultra-fast chargers, the superchargers or the level-two chargers and level-one chargers. It's to have the infrastructure in place so that if they need to expand, they can expand. It's been my experience in talking to people who build uh, things like this in my job as a securities analyst. That the load that's going to be required to go to the site, if you're gonna have that many chargers. Is simply not gonna be able to be handled by what they would normally put in. So what we're doing is we're trying to tell them. In ten years. We don't care if you have fifty superchargers out here, we want you to be able to handle. A hundred level-two chargers. Without having to get a whole new electrical system in your three hundred unit apartment complex. That's, that to me is the most important thing, is not so much how many places, how many dedicated spots they have. But the fact that as demand grows, they can easily put in those chargers. So if we start by saying two or three or four percent, that's fine by me, whatever, whatever number uh, the data shows. But I agree, I think that by twenty thirty-five. The number of uh, internal combustion engine vehicles on the road is gonna be very tiny. And as much as I am a great fan of hydrogen, I don't think it's gonna really cut into. Uh, the uh, the number of cars by a lot because there are, there are all sorts of complications with that. Whereas electrical, the electric vehicles, the technology is here now. So that's, that's my comment. I wanted to throw that in there and again, thank the team for putting together a very good uh. Presentation. Mr. 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 Dinsmore, what you were saying about the complexes and having enough. Uh, for the future, that's, that was the reason for my proposal for the individual homes being built, that they put that in. Day one, whether or not the homeowner wants to put in the charger, it is there in the future.
Absolutely. I think that's, that's a minimal start and I, and a good one. Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Fager, you're, um, just one last point. It, I wasn't sure, listening to Ms. Favate and Mr. Mandell and actually probably everybody. There's got to be, uh, and it just boils down to, are the calculations for charging stations a zero-sum game with the allotted parking? And if so, or as Mr. DiPiero was concerned, is it supplemental? Um, so we can look at these other towns, right, and the guidelines. And see if they are just taking, if, you know, the existing ordinance says two hundred parking sp- you know, two hundred parking spaces. Are they pulling three percent from the two hundred? Um, or are they, y- y- you know, is it in su- in excess to that? Um, cuz that, that does matter and I, I, maybe I'm just lost in my own sauce here, but it would be good to figure out. What the basis of their, of their math is.
Yeah, Bruce, I think most of the other communities that I've seen are doing it a- as a percentage of the total number of spaces. And the numbers are different, you know, what that percentage is, but it is, at least the, the ordinances I've seen is the same approach. It's, it's essentially taking a share of. The part, the parking that you were providing. And I think Mr. Mandell's analogy to ADA spaces is a good one. Not quite a hundred percent, but it's a good one in the sense that, you know, you're, you're making a guess. In the case of ADA, you're required by law. But you're, you know, you're, you're assuming a certain percentage of the residents or the users are going to need those ADA spaces. And here, you would assume that a certain number of the residents will have EV cars.
Okay.
But he, here, here, we're not guided by the, the Americans with disabilities. We're, we're kind of charting territory here.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to, uh, to, uh, focus on the comment that Mr. Dinsmore made, which, uh, interested me. Which is that the actual connection to the utilities themselves might need to be of a sufficient level. In order to, uh, in order to promote the growth of that infrastructure. Is this something that we should be including in this uh? I- in this resolution or in, in the ordinance, rather? And is that something which? Uh, is the right thing to do for something that might not be utilized for ten years? I, yeah, I'm playing people's advocate here. Any thoughts there?
I, I have a thought, Chairman. Um, I think the utility in time will be making, there will be adaptations because eventually. People will be able to, when they have this in their home, be able to charge their home from their car.
Yeah.
And that's what they're looking at too for the future.
I'm less concerned about the single-family home. I think that's a wonderful idea. It's the multi-unit dwellings. Where you're talking about, what might make sense today is. Ten spots, but what might make sense in ten years is a hundred spots. And a vast difference of the requirements for electrical need on those two things. Is that something that needs to be addressed from the onset? Or is that something that? We, we don't make a requirement of this, of this uh, ordinance?
John, that's a good question. Uh, I wonder if the engineer could address that.
Uh, as of right now, the um, ordinances do talk about the number of spaces, but I've not seen an ordinance that. Cuts out additional spots. Um, everything I've seen so far that. Been introduced to, used it for a zero net sum game. So if you had two hundred spots required, if five of those were used for EV, right now we would count those.
No, Chaz, uh, the, the, the question here, I think, is more, um. Let's say it's a three hundred space facility and they use the five percent and they put in the sixteen chargers. But they need fifty chargers down the road. Would they have enough power? To start with, or would they have to now go back to the street, new transformers and whatnot? And so the question is. You know, like in my proposal where I'm saying, hey, every house should have two hundred amp service. Should there be some requirement for these larger developments?
I understand because even, um, my home, I'm going through the same thing with different amps. Um, uh, we have to talk to an electrical engineer. I wouldn't be qualified to answer that question. I would, I would think that, um, they would need a higher service.
You, you know what occurred to me, Mr. Mandell, was, uh, was maybe you, you set your requirement for number of spots at, you know, your, your five percent level or what have you. But then you set a infrastructure requirement for twenty or fifty percent of the spots, you know, something along that lines.
That probably makes sense. I mean, it'd be nice to maybe get some input from somebody who really understands. I know enough about the single-family home to say, hey, you need two hundred amp service. I do not know enough about a three hundred apartment complex.
That's fair enough. It sounds like that one is, is a, is a spot too far for, for a non-specialist anyway, so. Um, yeah, I, I think that's definitely something that. Should be looked into. Now, I'm, I'm gonna refer back to Ms. Favate. Is that something that we should do uh, before we present to? The council or is that something that takes place after?
I, I think if you are comfortable as a board with the, the parameters, you know, the, the basic concept of Mr. Mandell's proposal. Um, I think you're probably ready to present to council. When it comes down to actually writing the ordinance, you know, that is when you're looking at these things. I mean, I think you can raise it as, uh, as a point that the board is concerned about, that you, you want to try to not only provide. A certain percentage of spaces now, but then provide for the, you know, the opportunity and the ability to, you know, provide more spaces without, you know, significant new investment. I think you raised that as an issue and then the attorneys can, you know, can be looking at other options that others are doing. And maybe even consulting with an electrical engineer. It's, it's, it's beyond my expertise as well.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, may I, may I make a suggestion that when we do that, we do have an electrical engineer and an expert on these two things that, on these things in a, an all-green team. So we can get some of that, their, some of their advice too.
That sounds wonderful. All right, so I promised an hour for this and we do have another application that needs to be reviewed, so I'd like to wrap this up. Uh, Mr. Wenzel, what is our process in terms of, uh, you know? Moving this forward to council, is, is there, is there a vote that needs to take place or, or, or something, uh? To give Mr. Mandel the go ahead or or if any objections to him moving forward with this?
Well, normally with land use ordinances, they emanate from the council and then they're sent over to you for review. And input and then goes back to council, obviously, as Mr. Di Piero well knows. Uh, the council is the body which would enact ordinances along these lines. Certainly, uh, should the board wish to uh, send a uh, recommendation? Or a conceptual ordinance or um. Uh, ideas or an ordinance that can be done unofficially. And the council can then decide to do it as they wish. Um, you know, if you wish to, uh, I know before you were talking about, uh, in essence, a proposal. For sending something up to council along those lines, uh, you can in essence, uh. Authorize a committee of the board to make that uh, presentation. To council if you uh, so desire. And then obviously, once again, it's up to council to actually take uh, the requisite action. And it's for people like uh, Susan and Chaz and I to uh, actually put pen to paper. But if this type of stuff you're talking about conceptually, really needs to be ferreted out at at the council level.
All right, so with that in mind, I don't think we need a a formal vote, but what I would like to do is uh, is go through all the board members and just to give. Uh, Steve and and Judy and his and that team. Uh, any other input and feedback that you'd like to for them to have?
I think it would be most constructive if. The council received a proposal since you are initiating this. Um, the planning board is initiating this. Put it in the form of a proposal to the township councils to adopt an ordinance. And we were talking before about some other towns or we're not, we're not inventing the wheel totally ourselves. So provide some examples of what some other towns are doing in the proposal. And then if you want the caveat of of a sample ordinance or something. Um, that they can look at, that would be even the more information you provide to the council. The smoother the path will be.
I just want to say that was a great presentation. I think it's a great idea as well. Nice job, Green Team.
I also, Mr. Fager here, I I uh, I I I concur. The work was done. We appreciate that. It's forward looking. Um, it's where we want to be. Uh, and so within the parameters that we discussed, obviously, things need to be hammered out a little bit. I'm all for it.
Yeah, again, great job by the team. I agree with that too. I guess the only thing that I would suggest is is. Uh, as we look at implementing this, just some suggestions from the team on prioritizing. Are they looking at new construction coming up? Do they want, are they recommending we should go do this retroactively? It's almost like it could be go run a pilot and see how successful it is. And if you had to go down that route, just prioritize and see what would you say is your first priority to go implement this program?
I want to anticipate this being new construction since that's what comes before the planning board.
Yeah, new. That was the original objective was new. Okay. Yeah.
Because uh, I think uh, Mr. Hernandez, what I'm thinking about is is right, some of the some of the permits or some of the applications that we are looking at, which were multifamily construction. So maybe if that gets approved, then it's tied to that as part of the condition.
You know, if I can comment on that right now, when an application comes before us, we ask the developer to include EV spaces. And very often they, oh, we don't want to do that. Well, they don't want to do it because it costs a little money. Um, and they're not looking forward. Uh, if this was part of an ordinance, uh, basically, if the box has to be checked, then they will do it. Uh, you cannot do this to existing. I mean, while it would be nice. That existing would look at this and say, hey, we want to do that because we want to keep the tenants that we have. Uh, there's no way we can force existing, I don't believe. I'll leave that to Mr. Di Piero. I don't think you can go retroactively and tell people that they have to do this.
The economics will dictate when they want to do it while they do it themselves.
Yeah, I could see a checkbox on apartments.com asking if you have EV EV parking stations, so. At some point in time, it'll become a means of competitive advantage. All right, so Mr. Mandel, you've received feedback from most of the board members. Um, I I think the assembly of a proposal makes a lot of sense. Uh, I'm not sure to what extent or how much more work is required to get it to that point. Um, but I I'd say it's worth pursuing. Um, and if if you want my uh. Uh, any of my time separate from from the meeting to participate with your team on that, I'm more than happy to help you.
Uh, Mr. Di Piero, when you you mentioned a proposal, you wanted in greater detail than just the. Basically, the one liner that I have proposed here.
I I would say yes, I, you know, you you could, you could point out the three different uh, levels. Of chargers, something tutorial because I I'm not sure any of them have any knowledge at all about this. So if you make it just a one liner, then they have to do a lot more homework. It'll take a lot longer to do it. You you have in the in your your green team expertise that can provide information that they don't have to individually. It's five members of the council go looking for answers. So the more more complete the proposal is, the smoother will be the process to get an ordinance.
Okay. I thank you.
All right, very good.
I thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, nicely done, Steve, and great job in getting this done so quickly. Uh, I think we tasked this with you about a month ago and you've already turned it around into a into a full presentation, so well done, sir.
Well, the green team had a good portion of it, so. However, just so everybody's aware, just read the paper almost every day and there's something about EVs. I mean, it's it's amazing that the the information that is coming out these days.
All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation and we are going to then close this portion for the evening. And move on to our application. So thank you, Mr. Mandel and to the green team. And with that, do we have representation from uh, Parsippany Littleton LLC on application number 20:529?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Peter Flannery, Liz Geyerhoff on behalf of the applicant Parsippany Littleton LLC. Uh, proper legal notice was provided for this application and I ask that the board take jurisdiction.
So noted.
Notice was in proper format, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Uh, just to briefly recap for the board, uh, this property is the former GlaxoSmithKline office complex at 1500 Littleton Road. Block 181, lot 19. It's in the research office laboratory district. Uh, there's also an affordable housing overlay zone, um, which is what makes this project possible. That overlay zone is a result of the township's affordable housing litigation. And there was a settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center as well as a an agreement between the township and the applicant. Uh, regarding the site and uh, the site is part of the township's housing plan. Um, it is helping the town satisfy its affordable housing obligations under state law. Um, the application is for preliminary and final major site plan for a 250 unit age restricted multifamily development. That includes a 20% affordable housing set aside, um, as well as preliminary major site plan approval only for in. Uh, assisted living facility, which also has an affordable housing component of 10%. Um, there's also a major soil movement permit and a steep slopes variance being requested as part of the application. Um, there is an existing carriage house on the property that will be retained and converted into a community center. Um, and various other site improvements, which uh, the witnesses will describe in greater detail. Um, so without further ado, if I could bring my my first witness uh, onboard, Benjamin Crowder, PE, our civil engineering expert.
Um, one moment. First, would you be able to um, identify all of the witnesses that you'll be bringing forward?
Certainly. I have Benjamin Crowder, uh, who's our civil engineer. I have Bruce Steve, who's our architect and uh. Gary Dean, who's our, Gary Dolan, who's our traffic engineer.
All right, engineer, architect and traffic. Very good.
Right, Gary Dean.
Before we get started with that, we also like to take care of the waivers that were um, requested by our planner. Ms. Favate, would you mind going through those?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. We had asked for some testimony, just some testimony which should be provided tonight or at a later date. On covenants and deed restrictions, additional information on the floor plans for the assisted living facility. Uh, the fences, location, height of all fences, walls and sidewalks. The applicant did request a waiver on temporary construction, structures and storage in terms of indicating where those might be. Uh, he indicated that that could be a condition of approval and we recommended that waiver. And then they also asked for waivers for the requirements for final major site plan and subdivision. As is typically the case, since they're asking for combined preliminary and final, we recommended those waivers as well.
All right, any questions or comments from the board about the proposed waivers? All right, hearing no comments raised, I'll accept the motion to approve the waivers.
I'll move Dinsmore.
And the second, all right, Dinsmore and then Mandel. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman Di Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fageri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes, um. Nora, did you include Ms. Jane in there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that point. Uh, because she wasn't present at the beginning of the meeting, I just wanted noted for the record that she has joined the uh, the meeting prior to the start of this application. So she'll be eligible to vote. All right, very good. With that said, I'll I'll turn it back over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit of housekeeping on the witnesses. Um, the three expert witnesses will be Benjamin Crowder, Bruce Steve and Gary Dean. Whoever ID have, uh, Mr. Scott Loventhal, who's the applicant representative here this evening, who as necessary will also testify. Uh, regarding operations and similar such matters.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, first witness is Benjamin Crowder, PE, civil engineer, our civil engineer. I can have him sworn.
Yeah. Okay, I see him, Scrotter. Scrotter, uh, do you swear firm tell truth for this planning board tonight in this virtual format?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Crowder, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Ben Crowder, first name B E N, last name is C R O W D E R.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowder. And Mr. Chairman, as you remember, Mr. Crowder, I think was here at the last meeting. And we qualified him as an expert in engineering. So unless Mr. Crowder has had a horrific two weeks and has lost his license in St. New Jersey. Uh, I believe he would be qualified as an expert.
Do any members of the board have any objection to accepting Mr. Crowder as an expert in engineering? All right, Mr. Crowder, you'll be an acceptable witness this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Crowder. Just to confirm, you are licensed as an engineer in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, and it's current.
Thank you. Um, I believe you have an exhibit. Uh, maybe we can introduce those first. Show the screen.
Absolutely. Nora, would it be possible to get share rights?
You have them, sir.
Yep.
Okay, we'll mark this A1.
To introduce the record, A1, area exhibit prepared by my office with this evening's date of March 8th, 2021. And what I intended to do here with this initial exhibit, before we get into the proposed site development. Is walk the board and quickly familiarize you with the subject site for our application this evening. And for the board's orientation, the top of this exhibit page is to the north. And the subject site associated with their application is delineated with a thick yellow dash line, which is centered on. This exhibit A1 for the record. Uh, as attorney Flannery indicated, uh, this is block 181, lot 19. Subject site is just under 26 acres. It's about 25.952 acres for the record. Uh, and is located within the ROL or your research office laboratory zone. But also has the affordable overlay, which is OVL6 overlay district for the subject site. And is thus uh, associated with the two principal uses that we're proposing this evening. In the age restricted housing, the assisted living for the development. Surrounding the site, uh, first walking you and starting you at the northern portion of the site. Um, surrounding uh, the north to northwest are single family residential homes comprised within your R3 residential zoning district. As you continue around to the east and southeast, subject site has frontage on Littleton Road, which is Route 202. It is important to note that this section of 202 is actually under Morris County Planning Board jurisdiction. Um, and certainly we have an application before that board that's currently under technical review right now. As it relates to their traffic signal, uh, centered along the front edge that aligns with Sylvan Way immediately to the southeast. But also their overall review of this development on their frontage. Beyond Littleton Road, you continue to have uh, office development also comprised within your ROL zoning district. To the southwest and northwest of the site, you have additional R3 zone, uh, which is comprised mostly of single family homes as well as public grafted park. Located along the western edge of the overall property. When I look at the site as a whole today, um, it was formerly the GSK Office Complex, the GlaxoSmithKline. Uh, that was in operation just up to about 2017. Uh, it's a two and three story office building, uh, that was approximately 69,000 square feet in size per floor. And as you can see from this aerial exhibit, a lot of the existing parking facilities, there's about 445 spaces. Uh, we're both on the northwestern portion of the site as well as the southwestern portion of the building. Uh, in addition, uh, some of the other features of the site, you'll certainly see in my next exhibit, which is a a proposed rendering of our application this evening. Is the Ballantine Carriage House, which is located more on the southerly portion of the site. It's about 5,700 square feet. You'll see that integrated into the proposed uh, age restricted component of this development. As one of the residential amenities. Two existing non-conformities, I just want to quickly identify for the record, both are existing to remain for this project. One pertains to an existing maintenance shed. It's about 877 square feet located along that southwesterly property line. Uh, we are required a 100 foot landscape buffer as it exists there today. It's about 67.6 feet away. Again, in the proposed condition, um, the applicant is looking to repurpose that shed in the same type of functionality. Which is for maintenance and use of the onsite management. which is for maintenance and use of the onsite management team for the residential community. Second existing nonconformity pertains to access. You do have a restriction of a two-way drive aisle of 24 feet. The signalized approach at Littleton Road is approximately 43 feet in width. And certainly as our traffic engineer will further support, that's entirely a function of the the signal approach that's there today, depending on the turning maneuver you'd look to be making as you want to get back to Littleton Road or continue straight down Sylvan Way. As it relates to access, the primary access point to the site, as I had indicated, is a signalized intersection centered along the Littleton Road frontage. And then there's actually a one-way egress only driveway that runs parallel to the southwesterly property line. That is also existing to remain. That's an egress only driveway associated with the site to get you back to Littleton Road. Some of the existing characteristics also important for this site. Serial gives you a bird's eye view of some of the design intent we were considering with the proposed development of this property. And that included consideration for the landscaping buffers around both the southwest property line, northwest property line and northeast property line, where you do have single family residential homes and preserving those landscape buffers in some areas, those existing landscape berms. And also a design intent focuses on a lot of some of the natural features that are present on the site today. There currently is a stream water course that traverses from a north to southerly direction through the development. It also includes a series of wet ponds through the area. And as we look at the redevelopment proposal, focusing in on the development that takes advantage of some of these natural features. You do have some large caliber trees on this site. Quite frankly, one of the largest trees I think I've seen in the state of New Jersey, it's actually a five foot diameter tree. You can see that on this aerial. It's actually basically due center of the overall tract that we're looking to preserve is that tree may have been around with the very original estate back in the late 1800s. So a really cool natural feature, certainly something as I had indicated, we look to maintain as part of our proposed design for this project. The next exhibit that I'd like to identify, and just to confirm, can the board still see my my screen and my switch to exhibits?
Yes.
So to mark this for the record, we can mark it A2, Mr. Flannery, unless you tell me otherwise. Site layout plan exhibit. This exhibit has also been dated with this evening's date of March 8th, 2021. Was also prepared by my office. What you'll see on this plan have rotated it about 45 degrees. So as far as orientation is of concern, top right hand corner of this exhibit is to the north. But your more common boundary is Littleton Road at the very bottom side of exhibit A2 that runs in a northeast-southeast direction along the site frontage. As I had indicated, the overlay zone for this project, which is the OVL6 has two permitted uses, and that's aid restrictive housing as well as assisted living. Both of those uses, along with their accessory uses are permitted in this zone and are what's before you this evening with their application. The age restricted housing units are proposed for a total of 250 units as permitted in the ordinance. And those are comprised within three buildings. And you'll hear some common numbering this evening between me, the project architect and the balance of the project team. Building number one, just to orient you on the plan, is this T-shaped building located on the northern portion of the site. And that's to include 147 of the 250 units. So the larger building, and certainly if you recall the aerial exhibit, one of the eastern wings of this building is a very similar position as the former GSK office building. And takes advantage of a lot of the natural features that run through the subject site. And just a point of clarity, one thing with regard to this exhibit, not only is it colorized, it also does have the proposed landscaping improvements superimposed as this is a copy of the sheet C301 within our permit drawing set, just for the the board's reference. Building number two is actually a building located more on the southeastern portion of the site. That's to contain a total of 56 total units of the 250 for the age restrictive housing. And then immediately to the northeast of that, almost in parallel, about 47 feet away is building number three, which is proposed to have 47 total units. Building number four is more specific down to some of the amenities that are being provided. And when we refer to building four, that's a proposed fitness and wellness center. It's approximately 9,880 square feet over two floors. And then immediately behind that, there's some exterior residential amenity space consisting of a pool and some other programming that our architect will walk you through with some of the elevations and renderings of the project. One of the existing buildings I described to remain was the existing Ballantine Carriage House. That is situated just to the south of the existing fitness and wellness center. That is approximately, as I noted, about 5,700 square feet. Applicants looking to repurpose that as a community center lounge and certainly have some gathering areas for residents of the community. Workspace, conference room areas, common space, you know, for gatherings of the like. And then you can also see hatched on this colorized plan, that existing shed I was describing along the southern end of the property line. And as I had indicated, that is proposed to be repurposed in a very similar fashion as it exists today, which is a maintenance shed for use by the onsite management team. And the last building is the assisted living building, and that is located at the northeastern portion of the site. As permitted in the ordinance, 120 assisted living units are proposed for this project. That is intended to be, you know, its own standalone community. We are just seeking at this time preliminary site plan approval at this point. And we're also providing the associated parking facilities on the exterior of that building as a whole. The site, from an overall zoning perspective, is fully conforming to your zoning ordinance, particularly as it relates to providing the required number of landscape buffer width. The principal structure setbacks, impervious coverage. Everything outlined in your ordinance is complied with as it relates to your underlying zoning here for our design and layout of these buildings. And of particular interest, just some information. We are increasing impervious coverage very slightly from existing conditions. It's going up about 7.7% to about 34.8%. This zone actually permits impervious coverage to be 70%. So we're well under half of actually the impervious coverage that's permitted in this zone. And as it also relates to building coverage, based on the building design and layout that you see here, we're only at 13.2%. Your ordinance actually permits building coverage of up to 35%. And I think that really speaks to some of our design intent here, and that's to cluster these buildings together, keep the develop more centralized into the interior of the site. And really focusing on continuing to maintain those landscaping buffers, those higher setbacks around the side and rear property lines of 100 and 125 feet respectively. But also really focusing in and taking advantage of some of the natural features that exist there today, including some of the wet ponds and regulated water courses that meander through a portion of this property as exists today. As it relates to access and parking for the associated site, we are, as I had indicated with prior exhibit A1, looking to maintain the existing signalized access point from Littleton Road into the site. As you can see on this plan, the first several hundred feet of the existing road, we don't intend to disturb or improve in any kind. And then that will connect into our internal circulation that we've designed and laid out to accommodate the various use with the age restrictive housing. And then we're also looking to continue to maintain the single egress drive. It's only a one-way out driveway that connects back to Littleton Road as the access points for the age restricted component. We are providing the required number of parking spaces either as under story spaces within each of these buildings or exterior surface spaces. We are provided to provide two spaces per unit. Thereby a total of 500 parking spaces and with the assisted living 0.6 spaces per unit for a total of 72 spaces on the assisted living component of the site. As it relates to overall building height, one thing I did forget to mention as I was talking about overall compliance to your code. All of these buildings are three stories. Over in some instances, a garage level under story parking condition. They are fully compliant to the maximum building height of 45 feet. The tallest building is 44.67 feet. And you will see that through some elevations by the project architect. But certainly an important characteristic here that the design of these buildings and the placement, not only horizontally with respect to the property lines, but vertically is in compliance with your code. As it relates to stormwater management, we are considered a major development as it relates to NJDEP and township stormwater regulations. I did note that we are increasing impervious coverage slightly by about 7.7% with this development. We have provided the necessary stormwater systems, including some additional underground detention systems to properly comply with all of those requirements as it relates to water quantity, quality and recharge. And we did prepare a stormwater management plan and report with our application. The only variances, as Attorney Flannery had indicated to you in his intro pertaining to this application, are disturbance of steep slopes. But more specifically with your ordinance, that's critical slope areas. And the way your ordinance defines them is there's three categories. We're looking for variance relief on category two and three, which are slopes that are between 20 and 24.99% and slopes in excess of 25%. We're permitted to disturb 25% of those category two slopes. We're proposing 36.1. And for those category three slopes are permitted 15% and we're proposing 35.3%. But we do have a significant grade change across the property. It's about 38 feet. But a lot of the requests for those disturbances is really stopping the extent of our development from an impervious coverage perspective. And preserving those existing 100 foot, sometimes 125 foot buffers that exist to some of those residential property lines. And it's necessitated some limited grading into some of those areas where you do have some some manmade berms and the ability to just tie back some of the interior site grades. And then we also have some limited disturbance associated with keeping the development out of some of the regulated features on this property. That certainly the NJDEP has already reviewed as part of prior approvals with GSK and certainly with the development of our property to make sure we design around some of those natural features and also allow that to serve as a amenity space for some of the residents for both the assisted living, but also the age restricted housing. From a lighting design perspective, we also prepared a fully compliant lighting plan as relates to the township ordinance, and that does pertain to achieving the minimum illumination levels in parking lots as well as sidewalk areas. Some of these areas of pedestrian vehicular interaction. And we also looked at the uniformity of the light and a lot of that was achieved through our light selection, which is state of the art LED area lights within the parking lot. They are proposed to be mounted at 18 feet. And then in some of the more pedestrian scale areas, some of the passive recreation or courtyard areas more internal to the site. We do have a decorative post top LED light that's also mounted about 16.77 feet in height, very pedestrian scale. But certainly when we look at lighting as it relates to sensitive residential neighborhoods, sharing common property lines with our project, one thing that we really evaluate is light trespass. These LED parking lot lights along the perimeter of the site will be equipped with internal houseside shields. So that's going to help manage the light source downward, help mitigate backlight potential. And the selected fixtures are actually dark sky compliant as it relates to that standard in the industry. And then furthermore, as it relates to light trespass, based on our photometrics, we aren't anticipating any light trespass. We're getting zero foot candle readings at all residential property lines, both to the side and the rear. And just because we have upwards of 100 feet of landscape buffer around a majority of the perimeter of the site, we're actually getting zero foot candle readings as much as 30 to 50 feet into the site. So not just measured at the property line, but actually almost halfway into that buffer or even further depending on its proposed width that we're providing. From a landscaping perspective, I talked kind of on the onset. That was one of certainly our focal points with this development, whether that be some of the existing natural features on this site, some of the large caliber trees that I was describing, but also preservation of the existing landscape buffers and berming that's around the perimeter of this site. So we did prepare a fully compliant landscape plan. For the record, it does include upwards of 1,879 new plantings on this property. That does include 194 new evergreen trees. And those are certainly being provided around the perimeter to further supplement and enhance the existing buffer width that's provided to some of those residential property lines. And also includes upwards of 144 shade trees. A lot of those being provided around the perimeter of the parking lots, some of the interior end cap islands, as well as some of the common courtyard residential passive amenity space on the interior of the site. And the last thing that I wanted to briefly just touch on, as Attorney Flannery had indicated, we are before you this evening for a major soil moving permit. That's triggered in your ordinance through soil movement onsite in excess of 100 cubic yards. Certainly with a project of this magnitude, we do have a lot of earth moving operations internal to the site. Our cut fill, just for the record, is around 36,000 cubic yards. But what's important there is from an earthwork perspective, we don't anticipate the need to import or export material on this project. We do have a very, you know, significant earth moving operation. But our ability to balance the earthwork, cut in some areas, fill in others is something that as currently presented before you is relatively balanced and certainly is going to be refined prior to any type of construction so that we can alleviate the need for moving material in and out of the property through the roads in the township. And that was a lot of my direct testimony, Peter, for both existing and proposed conditions.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Mr. Crowder, just very briefly, I know that you touched on this a little bit. If you could just distinguish between the preliminary and final application for the age restricted and the preliminary only for the assisted living facility?
Yeah, absolutely. So as we're before you this evening for preliminary and final site plan approval, that's basically for the age restricted component of the development. So that would include buildings one, two and three. The associated building four, which is the fitness and wellness center, as well as some of the exterior amenity areas, call it within the southern and western portion of this site. The preliminary approval is only associated with a separate community or component of this plan, which is accessed via a new proposed road that goes more toward the north northeast portion of the site for the assisted living building, which is to contain 120 units, but certainly vary in its preliminary stage at this point. So we're only seeking preliminary approval for that component of the project.
Thank you. Those are all the initial direct questions I have of Mr. Crowder. We'll have follow up questions when we go into the the review letters in a little more detail. But I'm not sure if the board members or the professionals had some questions or how the chairman wants to proceed.
At this point, typically we would go to our professionals where they will go through all of the letters. And if you hadn't covered any of those items in testimony, we'll get to them now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So let's see. Let's see, Ms. Favate, would you like to go first or which, or Mr. Holliday, should you go first?
I can jump in there just because it's the engineer. So I just wanted, you have the February 23rd report?
I do, yes.
And is there anything in there that you cannot accomplish?
No, we can comply. Uh, no, we can comply.
Is there anything in particular that you had any questions on?
No, I, as I ran through things, I did try to to touch on most most items for the project unless there's something specific you wanted me to. Potentially elaborate on, but I think I've addressed most of it.
One item that we're always interested in is the flood hazard area designation that would be through the D P.
That's correct. Yes. So as I've talked, I talked through some testimony, we do have a stream tributary that comes through the site. A portion of that stream tributary is actually regulated by the D P when its drainage area gets greater than fifty acres. So we are in the process of filing a flood hazard area verification. That really only impacts a small portion of the site and that's the the downstream end of the water course. Right before it goes under Route two oh two. But I can say for the record that it doesn't have any implication as it relates to the building layout and design. On this project for you this evening.
The, can you talk about the, we were just talking about the E V station and charging stations? Would you know how it's going to be updated? I see that a few were added to the plan.
Yeah.
The architect.
No, our architect will walk you through some of the locations currently already shown on some of the the plans that we had submitted. But in discussions with our client and the applicant, certainly one of the areas on the exterior of the site that is traditionally has. A couple of the car treatment spaces. We'll be looking for a location right around the the fitness wellness center, which is where also the management office will be. For, you know, two spaces. So it's it's one charger that serves two parking spaces in that area. And that's in addition to what you'll hear from our architect shortly for some of the buildings as well.
Could you give us more information on the water and sewer utilities for the site?
Absolutely. So currently services are coming in from Littleton Road. That's both sanitary and water services. We are proposing to do fire service loops throughout the buildings as you'll hear from. Our architects, all the buildings are fully sprinkled. And then our sanitary sewer conveyance is anticipated to use an eight inch line that currently services. The existing GSK office building that's there today. And that ultimately is tied in at Littleton Road for the project.
Are you in receipt of the Mount Tabor Fire Department memo?
I am, yes.
Is there anything in there that you had?
So for the record, we did, as it was indicated within this letter, members of our project team did meet. With Mr. Crawford from the fire district last Thursday to view the development plan. I know a revised letter memorializing some of the discussion points was issued today for that project. In general, as we've talked through everything, majority of the comments, I would say eight of the ten. We've arrived at solutions that we can accommodate with some minor modifications to. Some internal curb islands to support their fire apparatus maneuvers. As well as some requests for additional hydrants and coordinating that with the F D C. The two items that we're still working with the district on pertaining to comment number one and number four within that letter. Number four relates to the T building as we call it, but it's really building number one. And the ability of vehicles to drive through, it's actually a span bridge in that area. So you're actually able to drive through on the ground level. And we had discussed, you know, the larger vehicles certainly have the opportunity to get to this rear portion of the site. By going around this building, this was just an opportunity to provide another ingress point to the garage. And certainly that really is only applicable to some to vehicles that have a clearance under eleven feet. We're still working through that. And then item number one pertains to additional access on the eastern side of the building. We do have some severe limitations on this portion of the site as we go under existing conditions where there is no access there. For the GSK building, but we noted that we were going to look at providing some additional access around the northern side of the building.
Can you, can you highlight that on the on the computer screen? Can you use your cursor just to show everybody what we're talking about?
Can you see my cursor by chance?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm on the northern side of building number one. Currently we are providing a grass paver maintenance drive. This is to provide access to an existing switch gear that's there today for the GSK building, which we intend to utilize. Or incorporate into our electrical design. But we had talked with the fire department of potentially exploring some additional access that comes around the northern side. We are up against some deed restricted areas for some of these regulated features. So an access point all the way down this eastern facade of the building is not feasible. But we were looking at providing as much of a stretch of road that could accommodate their apparatus. On that side of the building, given some of the constraints. And trying to get it around, you know, the northern portion of the building for some additional access. And that's really what was pertaining to to comment number one. So we do still have a few things. You know, we're hopeful through some additional design collaboration meetings, we can come up with. Some acceptable access configurations to satisfactorily address these comments, but I think we're. Think we're almost there with with the Mount Saber Fire District.
Do you have any information on the water supply? I see that there's an older water system now. And I just wanted to get some additional information. The memo was in November twenty fifth, twenty twenty. It just has some water comments and I just wanted to know if you had anything to add for that factor.
No, I I reviewed those. I'm very familiar with with John's comments from the water department on some of these applications. I know there were some technical requests which we can accommodate. Pertaining to some of the the specific details from the water department into the design. And some requests on some of the networking as we loop service around some of these buildings.
And just to jump in, just to be really quickly on the water memo, comment two talks about. The water allocation being under a scarce resource order. We're aware of that. We're involved in litigation and there is a pathway to water allocation. So. We believe that'll be satisfactorily addressed by the time we need water for the project.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. Vate, anything else to add?
Sure, just a few, Mr. Chairman. We had asked for some testimony about outdoor landscaping amenities and then also just the overall. Connectivity of landscaping in terms of whether you have walking paths or, you know, passive means for, you know, residents to enjoy. Water features and, you know, the the large trees that you mentioned.
Yeah, absolutely. And and our architect will also have some, quite frankly, some some prettier imagery during his presentation. But just to give a quick summary, we are providing some some passive exterior spaces, some courtyards. With some sidewalks, a lot of ADA connectivity throughout really all of the buildings and linkage through sidewalks and some of these areas. And certainly as relates to some of the natural features, we do have some limitations on. You know, what we can do to provide, you know, a more hardscape surface there because a lot of it is regulated by the state. Through associated buffers and transition areas, but the intent there is they'd be enjoyed, you know, kind of in their their natural state. You know, both from the assisted living side, but also the age restricted side of things. We're also providing in between buildings two and three, almost like a streetscape corridor between those buildings, which will also have some. Some hardscape areas and, you know, some ornamental trees and landscaping in between. Those areas for another resident amenity space, kind of more centralized to the site.
And will the architect be testifying on the the outdoor recreation area next to the fitness center?
That's correct, yes. You'll see some renderings of, you know, some of that programming that's, you know, being considered.
And did you look at access to Grafton Park from the site, whether you could connect to existing? Amenities at that recreational area?
We did. This, we definitely discussed this a little bit with our client and the applicant. Certainly we understand the trail network that's up there and certainly in its its natural state, you know, the ability to walk through there of. A resident of this community to use that that park or those trails. We were hesitant on, you know, providing or enticing a more permanent link and linkage from that park into this site. Only because it's private property welcoming the public into this, you know, private area was of concern for for the applicants.
Okay. So if a resident from the site wanted to get to Grafton from the site, they could not?
They could just through the natural, just grassed areas and and area walking through to the back there.
Okay. We had some questions about some of the parking spaces and I think that G P I's memo also mentioned that there were a few spaces that seemed problematic. To get into or out of, and I know that the fire department also requested that you eliminate some spaces. Can you comment on how all of that affects your your compliance with parking standards?
Yeah, so I'll kind of hit that as a multi-part question. So I'll start with the fire department because that's fresh off of a conversation when we met with them. Virtually last week. The request was certainly more of a focal point of at some of these key internal intersections. Widening the radius of some of the curbs to provide a little bit more drivability tolerance for that apparatus to get through the site. Which in looking at this, we have the ability to to shift some of the parking space around to provide a little bit wider end cap island. So that provides some additional landscaping, but also elongates that curb for their access, which. They were, you know, critical that we support in that regard. Some of the the spaces, I believe, from, there was one comment with regard to spaces within. Building three, I believe, and our architect may be able to talk about this a little bit more, but it. It did pertain to three spaces at the very end of building three. We do have, I believe, a twenty four foot wide drive aisle in here. So while they do dead end. You do have the the ability for these vehicles to back out into the drive and then turning in egress out. And we'd be happy to, you know, demonstrate that through our auto turn software if necessary for a. A passenger car in those areas because we did look at that upon receipt. I think that was it. I know there were some additional spaces or perhaps an initial concern with some of the spaces maybe along the northern portion of the site. You know, the ability to back out into some of these areas. Unlike a commercial type facility, you know, the amount of traffic kind of circulating internal to the site is certainly a lot lower. So in my professional opinion, I don't have a concern with, you know, the orientation of these parking bays. We do have. Some stop control and engineering demarcation to to help control, you know, the intersections. For some of the parking alignment.
Yeah, I would defer to Mr. Holloway, but but that that sort of central aisle where it comes out of that angle, it's so, it makes for such a wide. Driving aisle that it just, and the stop bar is so far back. But Jazz, if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yes, we've talked a little bit about that. It's 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 fair. It's fine. I did have a question for Mr. Crowder on building number two. I've, there's a change in grade there. There's like a building is separated in two pieces. As seem to be independent. Can you talk about the grading there?
Yeah, absolutely. So while it is one building, you'll see in the architectural elevations, it kind of functions as two buildings. And we do utilize that for some of the grade break in this area associated with the drive aisle. And then also respecting some of the perimeter grades. It was a creative solution that we worked together as a design team to kind of. Break up the the building and you'll you'll see that visually a lot better with one of the elevations our architect will show. Particularly for that southernly facade of 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 building two.
If any changes were made to the plans, I would suggest that. You wouldn't, they will build the one, each one with the same number of parking spaces and the same. I could see it being one A or one B and then building two A, two B, something like that. It took quite a while to figure out what was being proposed.
Understood, and we'd have no problem breaking out or providing a little bit more clarity on on each of the the buildings. Particularly one where you have, you know, kind of two, from the the under story parking perspective, you have two, you know, separate buildings.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Crowder, could you confirm where the proposed retaining walls are located and from the height of those as well?
Yes. So in accordance with your ordinance, all of our retaining walls are no more than six feet in height. One of the main retaining walls is located along the eastern facade of of building number one. And we also do have some additional retaining walls, this is re buffers. Through this centralized space between building two and three. A lot of which are necessitated to provide an ADA path of travel where we have some grade change and likewise some stairs. And in general, we do have some smaller select retaining walls associated with the assisted living facility. And most of those are necessitated by preserving some of those NJDP regulated features. But as as I indicated, all are compliant to a maximum height of six feet on the project.
Okay. And I think you touched a little bit on the the flood hazard area. Are there any issues with the the? The T shaped building in particular that need, whether it, that building needs to be flood resistant?
Uh, no. So based on topography and certainly our flood hazard area verification that we're submitting to the NJDP. The flood hazard area is predominantly down on the downstream side of the stream, right before it goes under Route two oh two. So there are no building, additional building provisions that are needed with regard to that FHA area for the job or the project.
I think that does it for for me for this witness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any members of the could have questions for the civil engineer?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Hi, I do have a question about, I know you just talked about the flooding in the area close to two oh two. Where are the other loss of wetlands? I have an environmental impact report in front of me and.
So there are some additional regulated features on the project as I'm back on exhibit eight two. There's a small pocket of wetlands proposed near one of our exterior amenity areas. That is basically an existing stormwater facility that the state put a wetland line around. We are not anticipating to disturb in that area and it doesn't have a a buffer to it. And then you also have a wetland area between the existing access point from Littleton Road and our proposed access point to the assisted living facility. That area or really that area of the site is not, we're not proposing any disturbance in that area and we're working around. That existing constraint as it does have a fifty foot buffer to that that feature itself. You may still be on mute. I'd see you talking.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Also, I see in my report here that it says there's a permanent loss of mature trees. Now, maybe. You didn't mention that before.
Yeah, with our, yeah, with our development, there are some select trees, particularly around the carriage house that are being removed. And as well as our proposed access drive that connects through to the assisted living facility. We tried to locate that road to preserve as many trees as possible, particularly the larger caliber trees. So based on kind of compensating for the loss. You heard in some of my landscaping testimony, a lot of the additional plannings that we're putting back on the. you heard in some of my landscaping testimony, a lot of the additional plantings that we're putting back on the project. And we're feasible, certainly looking to, to transplant some of the maybe smaller caliber trees, if possible, that are already on the site today.
Will, will the architect be showing elevations of the landscaping or, because if you look like Friar Road, when you're standing like to the, looking at your drawing to the left, you, you do see the buildings from the, from the neighborhood. And I was just wondering if we'll be able to see elevations of how it will look with the landscaping later.
You'll, you'll certainly definitely add some elevations of, of each of those buildings throughout various vantage points in the site.
Okay. Another question is the community center. For who? Is, would Setchfield neighborhood be allowed in that community center? Or is that just for this new construction?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
The community center that's being built, that old beautiful building? Is that going to be just for this, these buildings and, and the assisted living? Or is it for the Setchfield neighborhood that's, this, this new construction is encroaching on?
So the, the community centers amenity associated with the age restricted housing. So that's buildings one, two, and three. But also outlined in that ordinance, there are some provisions that allow the public, quasi-public meetings to be held in there, you know, at a restricted amount. I believe it's 12 times a year. So to answer your question, I guess it would be both.
Okay, good. I just want to just make a, also Grafton Park, which is right on, on, on that perimeter is, is a small kind of park and I don't think it would be really a great idea to construct the road from here into the neighborhood. I'm just, that's just my two cents. I don't really have any other comments. Thank you.
I just have a comment if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. DPR.
Yeah, Grafton Park really belongs to Setchfield. However, could an arrangement be made where residents from this complex use Grafton Park and residents from Setchfield use the historic wall for meeting places? You know, a mutual two-way street or sidewalk. Something to think about. You don't have to, that's, that's, that's a new thought, but you might want to consider that to, to make the new residents here work with or friends with Setchfield residents.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question, if you don't mind.
Ms. Vate.
Mr. Crowder, looking at our, our initial review memo, we had suggested some areas that perhaps could accommodate some additional landscaping. You looked at those and it wasn't clear from the second submission that any changes could be made.
Yeah, and as you identified, we didn't make any landscape improvements between submissions. But we did look at those areas. I think you had identified, you know, some additional areas within the parking lot areas to break up some heat island effect as well as some of the area between the fitness wellness center and the, the Valentine carriage house, which we certainly can provide some additional plantings in those areas per your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Crowder, you mentioned you didn't plan on taking out soil or bringing in soil, but you will be demolishing the existing buildings correctly, correct?
That, that's correct.
How many truckloads of debris will be removed and what will be the route?
Don't have those quantities defined at this time. But certainly that would be something we'd discuss, you know, pre-construction with the associated professionals in the town on, on how that's managed out of, you know, as part of the demolition activities and, and certainly pulling a demo permit with the township.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Crowder.
The age restriction is what age?
Fifty-five.
Okay. And then if these 55-year-old people have children, are they allowed to stay there and go to the Presleyby schools?
I do not have the answer to that. I made defer to Mr. Leventhal.
Okay, thank you. How much water is going to be used per day by the facility?
It's going to be calculated on NJDP flow rates based on the, the building demand. I don't have that, that full gallon per day usage, but that's something we'll be coordinating with the water department and certainly the state level as well for a BWSE permit.
Okay. You said this, this is a, whatever buildings are there now except for that barn are all going to be demolished. Is that right?
With exception of that, that smaller maintenance shed that I was describing. That's correct.
Okay. And then this photo, this photo on the screen here you have, we don't have that in our plans. Is it, or, or doing, I'm just not finding it.
Oh, you, you do. This is only a colorized version of one of those plans. If, if you have the set in front of you.
It's on the floor. It's big.
Good old engineers. C, C 301 was what, what you see here. I just colorized it for this presentation.
Okay, I have, okay, I have that. So you have just the color version that we don't have, is what you're saying? Okay.
Correct, yeah. It's an exhibit tonight.
Sorry, last, last one for you is the, the proposed assisted living facility is going on completely empty property. That's there now. It's all green right now. Is that correct?
That area, that area is undeveloped today. Yes.
And the rest are all developed. Just going to change it up. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So Mr. Crowder, I have a question for you. Could you go into a little more detail about how the stormwater drainage system is designed to work? I understand you're using some basins, et cetera.
Yeah, so there's, and I can get as, as engineering as you need me to. There's, there's definitely existing onsite conveyance there today from the existing GSK facility that ties into in numerous locations that, that water course that meanders through the property. So we intend to use some of that conveyance or particularly those tie-in locations because we don't want to disturb some of those natural areas that we're trying to preserve. And really to handle some of the increase in impervious coverage, we are providing some smaller underground detention basins, one of which, as Mr. Napolitano had just indicated, is the area of the assisted living area that's undeveloped today. So we need to capture, detain, and then release that stormwater in a controlled way. So there's a facility there. And then there's also facility, basically if you can picture the centralized courtyard just to the north of building three here, there's also an underground detention system right there. But beyond that, there are some existing basins currently that are onsite today from the GSK facility that we intend to reuse and maintain. Certainly there's an operations and maintenance manual for stormwater facilities on the property.
Is that operations and maintenance, or has it been updated in any way to, to address whatever current requirements might exist?
That was something brought up within Mr. Holloway's review letter. It's certainly something we can provide as a condition of approval. Certainly we're going to need as we continue through our permitting. And that is certainly a recorded document that, that lives with the property for these stormwater facilities.
Thank you. One other question, could you go in? Where are all the areas that were impacted by steep slopes? Because I was seeing some, some lines along the assisted living area as well as, you know, some other parts of the property. So where are the steep slopes being disturbed? And, and what's, what's maybe the impact to their surrounding area?
Absolutely. So general, general areas, I would say, are located along the northern portion of the site. So right around building number one and some of these parking areas, we actually have an exterior trash enclosure. Some of these slopes, there's actually a pretty significant berm that exists there today that we want to preserve. And basically where our, our parking lot is tying in and then we're trying to tie into that berm, we're actually doing some grading on the site side of that berm in order to tie back quick enough to keep it preserved within that 100-foot area and a lot of those plantings that exist. And similarly along the southern property line, particularly a kind of adjacent to this maintenance shed and the carriage house, is a very similar situation. We have some of our existing parking lot grades. We're trying to tie back grades very quickly and we're disturbing a little bit of those areas that are in that immediate area of the site to the south. And then as you, as you indicated, through the, this new access road that we're coming through to the assisted living, we've located it and, you know, in my professional opinion, the best location because it does minimize tree removal and certainly a lot of those larger caliber trees. But there are a few select steep slopes in that area for the site. But it is, it's certainly a function of just an equation. There's not a lot of steep slopes on this property. So even just a little disturbance makes that percentage, you know, become high. So we're just trying to really respect the development limits and keep it within that 100 feet, that 125 feet that the code outlines for us.
So are, are there any areas where you, you may have potentially created a sleep, steep slope instead of a retaining wall or, or anything like that?
All of the, the grading slopes that we provide are a maximum of a three-to-one slope through the site. So we're, you know, I guess by your definition, that, that would be a steep slope because that's, you know, three-on-one, but that is a very comparable tieback slope for, for site grading, certainly from a, a slope stabilization perspective that's out there today.
And, and where are those, where are those features located?
We do have a lot of three-to-one grading in that area that I was describing along the north, northwestern portion of the site, which is basically the, the site side of the berm, if that kind of makes sense, because we want to preserve the integrity of the, the top height of that berm as it exists there today. And then certainly we have some select grading right as we get close to these regulated features, including the stream. And in any associated buffer area to wetlands and things, we're trying to tie back grades as quick as possible using that three-to-one slope where necessary. But it, it has introduced a few walls that I was walking the board through from Ms. Vate's question.
All right. So the, the areas where the slope is, is, the slope's basically going into the parking lot area. Did you have any on the eastern side of building one also? Is that where you were describing it?
We, we do have some, some areas of slopes along the northern side of the building, which is basically the side of the building that faces those regulated water courses. We are grading down there in that area at, at three-to-one and there is some select disturbance in that space as well.
How is water from the roof of that building being evacuated? Where is it going to? Is it going behind the building, the, the eastern part of the building? Or is it going towards?
The, the drainage from all the roof areas is generally being collected and, and conveyed internally through the conveying system and pipes. We are avoiding any type of daylighted pipe or, and we're certainly not introducing any new connections to the stream. We're maintaining what's there today. We want to leave that in its preserved state.
Okay, so there won't be any roof runoff going into that stream directly from the building?
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
Right. That, that's it for my questions then. I'll give the, any other board members a last opportunity to ask questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Crowder, that, that, that Malapatas, I guess Creek or Brook?
Yes.
That has water in it all the time?
The way, the way the, the ponds are designed is they are intended to hold water at all times. And it's, it's kind of regulated as you traverse through from the north to the south. Yes.
So you have a little lake on the property, so to speak?
Yeah, and, and it's certainly a, a great kind of passive space for some of the, the residents, you know, because it does have water there. I've been out there a couple of times. There've been ducks in the pond, so.
Any fish?
I have not dropped a fish line in there.
Well, how's that for passive recreation?
Yeah, it's not that deep for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So Chairman, quick follow-up question on the drain water from the roof. So where is that water going? I know it's not going in the, into that pond, but where is the water draining?
It's, it's a couple of locations depending on the building itself. So there are some existing discharge points to that stream. It's certainly a function of the water being supplied to that water course. So there's a, a connection point actually on the northern end of the site, kind of near this switchgear substation that's taking some of that water and discharging it. That's an existing condition. And then there's also some locations as you come further down to the cross-access point to the assisted living. We're also going to have a discharge point. Again, that is an existing condition. We're trying to avoid getting into those areas, creating any type of disturbance, which we want to avoid.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Um. Is there any way to maybe add some green infrastructure as part of the new storm Jersey, the new stormwater regs that could disconnect some of that coming off? I mean, I don't, we don't want it on the ground, but we can have it filtered through the ground. And I know you know what I'm talking about, some like swales or anything that we might be able to do towards Route 202 to help mitigate some of the extra water that we're going to have onsite.
Yes. So, you know, our, our application was submitted and deemed complete before those regs changed. But certainly as, as you've indicated, those new regulations do promote green infrastructure. So I think there's certainly some opportunities we can look into to maybe add some swales or some non-structural things around the perimeter that might remove a pipe and replace it with a swale that we could probably look to incorporate in the design that meets some of the, the, the basis for that green infrastructure component.
That would be great. That would be, that would, that would be a really good thing for us here in Presleyby to show that we can do that. And I'm part of the Presleyby Green Team, so we're motivated to do as much as we can.
Absolutely.
All right. Last chance for questions from the planning board of the civil engineer. Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flannery, yes, please. Go ahead, Mr. Flannery.
If we could just, I bring out our next witness, the architect. I know that we're getting close to 10, but he's got a great presentation.
You've got time.
Some wonderful elevation. So I think the board would really appreciate seeing that. Thank you, Mr. Crowder. If I could just call Mr. Bruce Steve, MHS Architects, have him sworn in.
All right. Do you swear, affirm, tell the truth before this planning board tonight in virtual format?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Bruce Stevie, S-T-I-E-V-E. I'm a principal in the firm of Marchetto Higgins Stevie Architects. We're located in Hoboken, New Jersey.
Okay. Before you proceed, Mr. Flannery, I believe Mr. Stevie's, at least on my end, he sounds very low in terms of volume. So if Stevie can either use his outside voice, as they used to tell me in kindergarten, or get closer to the microphone, I think that would help.
I will speak louder.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevie. If you could just, for the board, briefly state your education experience, licensure and other qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's and a master's of architecture from the Savannah College of Art and Design School of Building Arts. I graduated in 1989. I am licensed to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey since 1996. I've been with the firm of Marchetto Higgins Stevie at the time I was Dean Marchetto Architects since 1996.
Thank you. And you've appeared before many landes, boards, planning zoning boards in the state of New Jersey. Thank you. And you've appeared before, uh, many landies, uh, boards, planning zoning boards in state of New Jersey?
Sure. I've appeared before, uh, planning and zoning boards, uh, in Bloomfield, Montclair, South Orange, Newark, Morristown, Florham Park, Berkeley Heights, Hoboken, Jersey City, Bayonne, West New York, Long Branch, Asbury Park, to name a couple.
Thank you. I'd ask that the board accept, uh, Mr. Stevie's qualifications as an expert in architecture.
Any questions regarding, uh, Mr. Stevie's qualifications from the board?
No, but Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
I would note that it, the gentleman's audio was still barely able, were barely able to hear it, at least at this end. Is anyone else having difficulty hearing him?
It's low.
Yes, I had to raise my volume.
His, his, his audio is low. I take.
All right. Is that any better?
Yes.
Sounds better. Thank you.
Okay. What I did not hear though were any concerns about your qualifications. So you may continue and thank you for adjusting your volume.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Mr. Stevie, I believe you have an exhibit to present for the board?
I do. I have a PowerPoint exhibit. Um, it's in a PDF format. It's thirty-six slides, some of which are the, um, exhibits that we submitted as part of our application and some that are new exhibits. So, uh, I believe we should just, uh, enter this as an exhibit.
Yes, we'll, uh, enter that as Exhibit A three.
In total.
In total.
We'll call Power A three as a architectural PowerPoint presentation.
Yes. And if I can get the ability to share?
You have the ability.
Okay, I'm clicking share and nothing is happening.
Stand by one. I'll give, I'll give it to you again.
Okay.
You have the ability.
I'm sorry, but it's not letting me share. I clicked the, the share button at the bottom of the screen, correct?
Correct. And you are a presenter.
It is not letting me do anything.
Does anyone, does anyone else on your team?
Yeah, can, can we have maybe, uh, Mr. Crowder?
Yeah, I, I could absolutely make him presenter.
Uh, it's, it's very important that I get the, the ability to present though, because we have, uh, other exhibits that I'd love to share that Mr. Crowder doesn't have access to.
All right, Bruce, you're just looking for your, your PDF.
Mr. Crow, Mr. Crowder has presenter again.
There we go.
Bruce, okay. You just tell me when you gotta go and I can go ahead.
Okay, so, um, if you can, uh, go ahead and enlarge the screen and then flip to the next slide, please. So, um, uh, again, from, uh, my company, Marchetto Higgins Stevie is a, an architecture and planning company that specializes in place making and appropriate design solutions for our clients. Uh, most of our work is focused on multifamily residential and mixed-use communities. In addition to our suburban work, we work in downtowns and cities on projects that span between a few units to a few hundred units. We work in all areas of the state of New Jersey as well as the, uh, as well as in New York and Pennsylvania. You can go to the next slide, please. So, uh, I'm going to start just quickly. Uh, Ben had done a great job of introducing the, uh, context and, and location. But the site is located approximate to four major vehicular travel routes, Route two eighty-seven, Route ten, Route two oh-two and Route fifty-three. This is particularly well-suited for a, uh, a, uh, adult, uh, community, um, because of, of its proximity to shopping and to healthcare services. So I think that's one of the, uh, a, a great point about this site. Uh, the next slide, please. Um, to the east of the site is a large corporate office comple, uh, complex. Um, and to the north and west, as Ben described earlier, is residential development. Uh, the perimeter of the site is heavily landscaped with mature plantings. And the existing site is currently occupied by a vacant commercial office research facility that has a large U-straight, uh, U-shaped office building um, that is surrounded by its required parking. Go to the next slide, please. This is a view from a Google Earth view, looking at the site, looking to the north. Um, you can see that existing two and three-story office building in the center of the site. Um, and you can also see the mature plantings at the, uh, perimeter of the property's edge. Next slide, please. So this is a, a view looking down on the site. As Ben mentioned before, um, the property is almost twenty-six acres. There are a one-hundred-foot side yard and one-hundred-foot rear yard buffer requirement as well as a forty-foot buffer, front yard buffered requirement. There is also a hundred and twenty-five-foot, uh, rear yard and side yard setback and a one-hundred-foot front yard setback, all of which, uh, the proposed project honors. Next slide, please. Uh, the site occupies much of the same area as, uh, the proposed site and proposed building occupy much of the same areas as the existing office complex. The pro, the proposed project complies with all of the requirements of the, uh, OBL six for project overlay zone. And the buildings are constructed within the perimeter boundaries. Uh, much of the natural vegetation and landscape buffer areas at the perimeter of the site and surrounding will remain in place uh, and maintain the existing screening for the adjacent property. Next slide, please. Um, these are some, uh, exhibits that show the existing conditions. So, um, these show some of the, the natural plantings, uh, and those, um, uh, water elements that Ben had mentioned earlier in his, um, his presentation. Uh, much of these, uh, date back to when the property was used as a summer estate for the Valentine family. Um, the top left-hand image is a, a picture of the pond with a granite wall surrounding on. The, uh, next upper right picture is a view across the pond at the, uh, existing gazebo building. Um, the lower left-hand is an image, uh, from the center of the site looking towards Route two oh-two. And then, uh, the lower right is just an image of some of the other mature plantings on site. Next slide, please. Um, so, uh, in the upper, uh, left-hand corner is a detail of that, um, gazebo. That gazebo is intended to remain and will become part of the, uh, walking and amenity package of the proposed uh, project. Then there are some existing photographs of the, uh, uh, research office buildings. Um, those will be removed as part of this proposal. And there's also a picture of the, uh, large tree that Ben mentioned earlier. Um, that'd be, uh, it'd become a focal point of this, uh, new development. Next slide, please. Um, in twenty fifteen, the existing carriage house that was part of, uh, uh, the Valentine, um, estate was restored. This building is proposed to remain. Uh, it will be used as a, uh, a multi-function building for the residents of, of, of the development. Um, there are a series of multipurpose rooms within the space. There is also, as was mentioned earlier, the, uh, ability for the township. Uh, as is indicated in the, uh, the OLV, OBL plan, uh, for the township to use the property uh, for a series of meetings throughout the calendar year. Next slide, please. Um, these are some interior photographs of that facility. Uh, this is actually of the main meeting space. Um, and there are a series of other breakout rooms, uh, throughout the building. Uh, that can be used for multiple purposes. Next slide, please. Uh, I'm going to start to take you through the concept plan. This is one of the earliest drawings that was generated, uh, when we started talking about the project and, and how the property might be used. Uh, one of the very unique features of this pro, entire project and the proposal itself is the, um, the age-restricted community and, and what does an age-restricted community, um, need and what are the needs of an age-restricted community? And when we began talking about this and planning on this, one of the things we've ultimately decided was one of the premier assets of the site, which is the sort of natural, um, the natural features and the, uh, the landscape and, and sort of the beauty of those things and how that would translate to a, uh, an age-restricted community. Uh, with the ability of using those, uh, to create a, a, an environment of health and wellness. Uh, a walkable environment. When we were talking about the buildings and how we were going to orient the buildings on the site, one of the things that we talked about was keeping the, um, the area of disturbance in the area that was occupied by buildings um, compact. Um, this would, uh, foster a sense of community. It would foster a sense of safety and security. It would, uh, encourage interaction between the residents. Um, and it would become an exciting and officially exciting environment. As an aside to that, uh, we were able to create a variety of active and passive outdoor areas. Um, and that's something that the planner had mentioned in her, her letter. And, and a few of those, um, concepts were to create a, a central park space that could be enjoyed by all of the residents. Um, that central park space could have active and passive, uh, activities. Um, there is a unique pedestrian street or a pedestrian muse that connects between, uh, buildings two and three. Um, and that, uh, that pedestrian street, um, has a lot of different functions and I'll go over those a little bit more when we get, uh, into the final planning. The other idea was that there may be some form of, uh, uh, outdoor spaces that could be used by, um, by the residents in the buffer areas. Maybe there could be a community garden or you could have planting areas. And then there would be the fitness and wellness component where you would have the fitness center, um, a pool area and an area that you could have outdoor gaming. So that I'll go more into detailing as we go forward. So the next slide, please. Um, I'm going to begin showing you the project plans. These plans are the same plans that were submitted in our application package. They've been augmented with color, um, so that it makes it a little bit more enjoyable to see on the screen. So, um, starting with the cover sheet, um, the, there's an image on the front cover sheet that is looking down into the, uh, the central park space. At the, uh, group of buildings at the center of the site. Uh, this shows, uh, that the architectural is a transitional style. It blends contemporary design with traditional suburban architecture forms that, that borrow from even an agricultural route. As was mentioned before, the site is approximately twenty-six acres. The proposed project is two hundred and fifty units, two hundred of which are market rate, fifty of which are affordable. Um, there will be five hundred and seventy-three parking spaces on the site. Um, and as we've mentioned before, the site was one, once the home of the Valentine estate, uh, which was a summer retreat for the Valentine Brewing Family. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is a.
I hate to interrupt. Mr. Stevie, what were we looking at in that last drawing? What, what building was where?
So, uh, so, uh, in, in the center of the site is the park. To the left of the park is building three. At the back of the park is building one, which is the T-shaped building. And then the, uh, building coming forward is the T portion of, of, uh, building one. And I can show you that in the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I can't point to it, but Ben, perhaps you could, uh, point to building, uh, the park in the center. That's the green space in the center. Building three is the building to the left of the park. And then you're looking forward towards the T-shaped building. And then that tower, the stone tower that you saw was at the corner right there where Ben's hand is. Uh, so, uh, as we were, just to go through that quickly again, so this, this diagram basically shows that the site contains five new buildings. Uh, building one, which is the T-shaped building at the top of the page, has a hundred and forty-seven units and a hundred and seventy-five garage parking spaces below. Uh, building two, which is to the southern section of the site, uh, has fifty-six units with thirty-four parking spaces. Uh, those parking spaces are unique in that they are, um, single garage spaces, uh, with the driveway space in front of them. Uh, building three, which is adjacent to the park, is a forty-seven unit building with sixty-two parking spaces and a garage underneath. Um, building four, as was mentioned before, is approximately ninety-eight hundred square feet of fitness and wellness, um, as well as building management offices. Um, and, uh, building five is the future assisted living building. We've included in our presentation some, uh, elevation images of this, but at this point in time, there is not an operator for this. So we didn't go, uh, much further than, uh, the proposed, uh, building elevations. Um, and I just wanted to note that the, that this diagram shows that the proposed building is in a similar location to the previous, uh, office research building. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a ground floor plan. This ground floor plan again has some color on it just to make it pop a little bit. But, um, at the bottom of the page is the health and, uh, the what fitness and wellness center. Um, to the left of that is the existing carriage house building that I showed you pictures of earlier. Uh, again, you've got the central park. Um, and again, this space, we really anticipate there'll be, uh, small seating areas at, uh, either end of the park and then, uh, a larger, more open, um, multi-function space uh, in the center that can be used for a variety of events. Coming around, uh, between buildings two and three, um, you'll see that, that, that is the pedestrian muse or the pedestrian street. Um, as Ben mentioned, there are some grading, uh, challenges or changes in there. So, um, there's a series of ramps and steps that connect, uh, different levels of that plaza space. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out here also in trying to foster that idea of community and, uh, and sense of place, all of the lobbies for these, um, these, uh, three residential buildings, uh, open onto a public space or, or the, in this case, three of the buildings, uh, two of the buildings open onto the park and one of them opens onto the muse. But there's a visual connection from building two to the park. We set building three back so that, uh, the lobby from building two was just a straight walk right to the park. So we're trying to create these sense of place and, uh, connection to the park space. There's also a secondary lobby on building one that opens up and goes, uh, straight across to the, uh, the pedestrian muse. And thinking about that, we were thinking about how people might walk through the site. And one of the ways they may want to go to the, um, the, the fitness and wellness center or the community building, the, the, uh, the carriage house, they may come down and walk down through that pedestrian muse to access those spaces. Or they could walk through the park space. And then as Ben mentioned, uh, in, in addition to those public amenities, um, There's also the ability to have walking trails that wrap around the perimeter of the site. We've talked about providing maybe putting greens in the buffer or or community garden spaces, things of that nature. And we'll go further into those as we move forward. There are. You guys did a great presentation on electrical vehicle charging stations, EV stations. In these buildings, we're proposing one dual charging electrical station in each of the buildings. That'll be a total of eight interior electrical charging stations. And then we're also proposing an EV charging station at the fitness and wellness center. Outside the building. All of the trash collection will happen inside the building. There'll be trash chutes on each floor. So residents will be able to bring their trash to a central collection space on each floor. Put it into a chute, it'll go down the chute into a collection room in the garage. And then be brought out to for pickup by a private hauler at designated times. The one thing I wanted to mention also in in looking at ways to activate the pedestrian muse. There are a series of amenity rooms in building two in the base of building two. Those amenity rooms will open directly out to plaza spaces within the pedestrian muse. So in the event that you're having an art class or you're having. Maybe it's a book club or something like that. In the event of good weather, you may want to open up the doors and connect to the out outside. Or if you're having a birthday party for someone or something like that, you might be able to have a connection between the inside and the outside. So. And that will help activate that space and make it feel. Inviting and comfortable and safe. The next slide, please. This is an upper level floor plan. It basically just shows the basic configurations of the building. Again, it was mentioned that the project is going to have two hundred and fifty units, two hundred of them will be market rate. There will be seventy two one bedroom apartments, twelve one bedroom den apartments. And a hundred and sixteen two bedroom apartment units. And then there will also be the fifty affordable and those fifty affordable as per the plan are designated as one bedroom apartments. If you need the breakdown for each building, I can go through those, but. We can go to the next slide, please. And the next slide as well. These are the second and third floor plans. They're basically duplications of the of the lower level plans. You will notice that there is articulation throughout the buildings. The buildings aren't flat. There is modulation in the facades. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that when we get to the building facades. But in order to, there's a requirement in your in in the ordinance that requires there be. Articulation in the building facades and then just as good architectural practice. We want to provide articulation in and design features in the building facades. Next slide, please. I did want to mention too quickly on the last slide that. These buildings are going to be built to follow all of the state, local. And national building codes that are applicable to this type of building. Buildings are going to be fully sprinkled. And will comply with the state and local fire codes. And all the buildings will be handicap accessible and compliant. And so that means each feature, each unit will be handicap accessible. This is a roof plan. This roof plan shows that all of the HVAC HVAC equipment and and required equipment will be located on the roof. There will not be condensing units on the ground. They'll all be located up on the roof of the building. And all will be screened from view. You'll not be able to see any of this mechanical equipment from the ground. And then this also begins to delineate some of those roof features. That I'll talk about more as we get to the building facade. So next slide, please. And the next slide. So this is a building elevation. This is a partial elevation of building number one. So if you can go, I could talk quickly. I think I'll talk about the next slide, please. So this is building one. This is at the back of the park. This to the right, you'll see the two gable forms. And there is a porch. That's the lobby entrance to building number one. When I was talking about the articulation, the articulation on the building facades are the in and out movements. That help apply a texture and a. That articulation, that movement in the facade, those are created by popping out these gable elements. On the facade of the building as well as bay windows and balconies and the decorative roofs. That you see and the gables, the dormers that you see. At the top of the building, you'll see that the roof pitches back. That's that parapet that I was speaking about. The parapet doesn't just go up straight. In suburban residential buildings, you'll often have pitched roofs. So in this instance, we use the parapet and we pitched the parapet to look like a pitched roof that you might see on a. On a garden apartment or on a on a a single family or or two family residential building. And we've introduced chimneys and things like that, that that again recall residential buildings and reflect. The architectural of the community that's surrounding this project. We can go to the next slide, please. This is the other connecting portion, the T section of of building one. The elevation at the top is the other lobby entrance to building one. That is to the right side of the park. The section in the middle that appears white is actually a section through that bridge area that we were talking about. And then the back is the wing that sticks out to the back. The elevation below that is the elevation that faces the the water features. On site and then we've got the two end elevations. And if we can go to the next slide, please. So this is again that image that was on our cover sheet, so I can explain it now a little bit better. You've got the park, you've got that building one that we just were speaking about. With the bridge connection that is in the distance of the park, you've got the lobby entrance directly ahead at the end of the park. And then you have building three to the left of the park. The material palette that we're talking about for this project. Again, in in thinking about this, we wanted to use materials that you might find on projects. One of the things that we were looking about and looking at Parsippany, we we looked at. Craftsman Farms, which is a a beautiful complex that's just west of this project. But we started, we liked the materials that were being used or that were used on that project. So we introduced some of the stonework. To tie back to that, the green. Standing seam roof detailing and a vertical siding on the building in a couple of different colors. Next slide, please. These are the elevations for building two. It was noted earlier that there was a. A unique feature on building two and that it stepped down because of the grading. So this is, this was one of the more challenging sides of grading the site, that this site sloped most on this side. In order to get the garage parking to work and and. Situate the building, we stepped the building. So the top portion of the building is at one elevation and then as the grade drops off. The building drops off as well. And so the building follows the grade. The top elevation is the west elevation. It shows the the parking garages. And then the east elevation is the elevation that faces the pedestrian muse. You can see those large doors and windows that open out into those plaza spaces that I mentioned earlier. And to the extreme right of that elevation is the lobby area that opens up and goes connecting to the park space. The next slide, please. So this is a slide looking up the pedestrian muse from the end. Closest to the community, the fitness and wellness building. And this gives you an idea of the character of that space. There's a series of gardens and terraces that link between the two buildings. And then at the end of this vista, you see the secondary lobby access from building one. You see that what we're trying to do is create interesting and unique spaces that have a variety of different characters. So. The earlier image that we showed you of the park was a larger, more wide open space. This is a little bit more intimate and has the ability to. Provide different uses and functions in that space. Next slide, please. So this is building three. This building fronts is the building that fronts on the park. So the the entrance portico for this building is on the right hand side. And then one of the things that we thought was interesting was each building has a unique vision or vista from. Access and entry to the site. And so in this instance, we used a stone. Turret or tower at the end of the building closest to. The side of the site that faced two oh two or or the entry point to the site. So it created a unique architectural feature at the beginning of the park. As the tower element of building one did at the end of the park. Next slide, please. So this is a an elevation looking through the park towards. Building three. And again, you can see clearly how we've used the gable. Articulation across the facade to modulate the facade and create a rhythm on the facade that creates visual interest. We used elements like bay windows and balconies and dormers to. To reduce the vertical scale of the building. And as I mentioned earlier, you can see that stone signature element on the left hand side of the building. At the at the entry to the site. Next slide, please. This is a, this is the fitness and wellness center. It's also the management office. We've also got blowups of the plan that you can see. There on the left hand side of the page. This plan, this building was designed to be a partner to the existing carriage house building. Again, it was, it's it's designed to have more of an agricultural look to it. So that it feels like it may be another carriage house or barn building. And 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 it again, it helps reduce the scale of the project. This is one of the first buildings you'll see pulling into the site. On the ground floor plan, ground floor level, there'll be a fitness center with small lockers and changing rooms. Those will function as. To help service the pool area as well. And on this floor, there's also a leasing center and a model unit. Again, thinking about. Age restricted and and the age of the people that be coming to visit this site. We wanted to have a unit that was in the leasing center that. People wouldn't have to walk through the entire complex to see a unit. They could go into the leasing center and there'd be a unit right there that they could look at. On the upper floor, we have the management office for the for the facility and a spa area. Again, to that could be used by residents of the community. Next slide, please. This is a view looking toward the existing carriage house. With the proposed wellness center in at the in in the foreground of the slide. And you can see how these two buildings were designed to, this was designed to have a dialogue with the existing carriage house. Next slide, please. And these are architectural elevations of the. Assisted living building, as I mentioned earlier, at this point in time, there's not a provider for the assisted living facility. However, we wanted to give you an idea of what that building might look like, the scale of it, the character of it. We wanted to show that it would be consistent with the architecture that's already established for the. For the rest of the project and that the quality and materials will be consistent with what was being contemplated. On the rest of the site. And then I think we have the last slide. So this is a view of the end of the park. Looking back at building one. I mentioned that there was an architectural feature at this end of the park that anchored the site and and drew your attention to it. And that's that turret element in the corner. That's the knuckle of the T. So it becomes the high point and the focal point of the park. And the project and then you've got the lobby into that portion of the building directly in front of you. With the other smaller turret again flanking the park and right next to that will be that. Over that that beautiful, large existing tree. So that kind of sets the tone for the park space. That's my architectural presentation. I have a. Model that I'd love to fly you around. I don't know if we can take a moment and I can see if I can get it open again.
Yeah, certainly we can try, we can try again, or we could, you know, end the direct testimony and you'll come back next hearing, beginning with that model. And hopefully technical difficulties will be resolved by then.
I would like to say that. We work in three dimensions. Architecture is a three dimensional study. And so we have this, we have the ability to share that with you. So I would like to try and do that and have you see that.
Okay, do you want to try now? Have the sharing. Authority given back to Mr. Stevie.
Mr. Chairman. It's it's ten fifteen. Have we got, did we say ten o'clock tonight? We're going to stop testimony?
We we allow testimony to continue. That's already started part to ten. And so. We we should allow Mr. Stevie to to finish his presentation. My suggestion is we give it one shot and and if not, we'll allow it to carry over to the next session.
It sounds great, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Chairman. I have a question for Mr. Stevie.
I don't believe he's finished his testimony yet.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Ben, can you stop sharing?
I am, I'm not sharing anymore.
Okay.
I still have the capabilities, so I think it's got to come back to you.
Yeah.
All right, so we are making Mr. Stevie the presenter. Okay, Mr. Stevie, it looks like you've been assigned presenter responsibilities.
I got it. Great, so give me one second here and we'll get that.
Here we go.
All right, so I'm going to pull my. Model over. So do you guys see an image of the site?
Yes. Can mark this A four.
So this is a a quick fly through of the property. So right now you see the assisted living building in the foreground. You see the water course. The fitness and wellness building with the carriage house and then the proposed buildings. I'm going to take you quickly into the project. So now we're down at street level and we're approaching into the property. So as you come through, you'll see that the water course is going to come through. There's the fitness and wellness building in the foreground. As you approach the site, you begin to get a glimpse into the site. You see the the tower element of building one at the entrance to the park. You can see the fitness center. This area will be the pool area with again outdoors activities and games. Coming up to the site, to the right is the access to the assisted living facility. In the foreground, you have the park. In the foreground, you have the park, building three on the left. You have building one in the background with the tower element and garage access point to building one. I skipped one step. I'm going to back up real quick. This is looking up towards the park. So you see that the park has a gentle slope. There'll be activity areas at either end of the park and an open space in the center. This is, this is an image where I'd like to show the. The three lobby spaces that open onto the park. So you've got lobby for building three. You've got two lobby areas for building one. You've got the portco share or the drive under that connects to the parking area under building one. Now we're looking down the roadway, beginning to go back to. Building two. And here you can see that the lobby of building two is on access with the park. So there's a direct connection and link and all of these lobby areas open up into. One sort of central community area. And that creates this great sense of community and pride of place. This is coming down towards the pedestrian muse. The front entry ports to building one and reports to building three and the entry porch to building two. This is the. Secondary lobby that comes out of building one and connects to the pedestrian muse. This is beginning to look down into the pedestrian muse. So now we're looking down into the pedestrian space. So this is really a pedestrian priority street, and this becomes sort of a lifeline connection between. The residential buildings and the carriage house down at the end. With these wonderful little plaza spaces that open up to the amenity rooms. In building two. Now we're looking towards building one and and. The plaza skipped a step. I apologize. Go back real quick. So there you can see the the larger turret element at the intersection of the two knuckles of building one. We're looking back at the lobby space for building one, the drive, the bridge connection is to the left. Then you've got the park to the right. Looking back through the park at building one, that large. Historic tree is to the. To the right of the building one. Coming back around. Now you're standing in the in the park space looking up towards building one. This is looking back through the park to the. Looking at the entire complex. Turning, we talked about those feature elements at the end of building two. And building three, those are the stone feature elements that you see entering into the site. See the connection. From the. From the community space up into the plaza space. The pedestrian muse. Now we're coming back into the best pedestrian muse from the other direction. You can see how these spaces, the amenity spaces will open up into patio areas. There'll be garden areas. So residents will look down into this wonderful space. Coming up to the building one connection again. And then looking back towards. Coming back. This is looking at the. Building two with that grade change. So the grade slopes down and you can see the parking garage access. Coming back to the park space. Looking down the park towards the wellness and fitness center. And that's the model presentation. So again, what I'm hoping you get from that is that three dimensional character of this. Of this community. And the has a theme that runs through it and I think ties it together very nicely as a a community.
Thank you, Mr. Stevie. That's all the dress testimony we have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
You're muted, John. Thanks, Steve. So Mr. Flannery, all your witnesses will be available when we reconvene.
Yes, they will.
Okay. So with that, I I'd like to, I'll ask briefly among our board members and professionals. If they'd like to ask any questions or hold those until the next meeting. I do want to open up the public portion briefly if if we could.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. One second, Mr. Mealy. I will get to you first, though.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to get to the public portion despite the hour, but. You know, with that said, we'll try to wrap this up reasonably quickly. Mr. Mealy, the floor is yours.
Yes, for Mr. Stevie, I assume each lobby in the larger buildings will have an elevator. Are there more than one elevator in each of these buildings?
Yes, sir. There are more than one elevator in each of the buildings. Just get to a floor plan very quickly so I can show you. We're going back to the first exhibit. So within the lobby for building one, there's an elevator in this lobby. There is an elevator in this lobby. There's an elevator in this lobby. There are two elevators in building three and there are two elevators in building two. Each of those elevators are designed to meet all of the handicap accessibility and life safety requirements.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Stevie or for. Our attorney or planner. Mr. Stevie indicated that the affordables would only be in the one bedroom. Does that comply with our COA regulations?
I believe that does comply. We can confirm by the next hearing. But I believe that complies with the agreements and the ordinance.
I believe that's also the case that the requirements are different when you have an assisted living, don't have the same. Three bedrooms and two bedrooms and.
Okay, that was my question then.
But we can confirm that. I believe it does comply.
Okay.
All right. So let's just take a note of that and get a firm answer for the next time.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions among the board members? All right, and Ms. Vavate, did you have any questions?
Just just a couple because I can hold most of them to the end, but I. Thank you, Mr. Stevie, for the three D tour. For next time, can you also provide, I don't know whether it's. Or whether you can have it elevate, just plain elevation. Something from the western. Side. And as that, particularly as the T shaped building one is viewed from from the rear essentially.
Right. Yes, I can do that. Just get to that plan. So we're talking about. Back here, this elevation.
Yeah, just because the the way the building is angled and and the fact that it's essentially connected at the T. And I think it could read as a long building, you know, very long facade from certain points. I don't know whether whether a viewer could see, could see it all and it's in town. Just be curious to see that elevation. I mean, I'm a little bit less concerned about the, I think that's the north elevation on the right because there's so much buffering. And a great distance to the property line, but it's it's that rear. Rear elevation that I'd like to see.
Okay. We can get something for you to see.
And on the assisted living facility, I recognize you don't have an operator. You could be prepared next time to testify on just this sort of nature that you envision. Are they, are they. Occupancy units? How, you know, how extensive are the nursing capabilities that you would envision, you know, anything that can be provided at this point in time? Recognizing that there is an operator in place. And then lastly, maybe you can answer this tonight is, will there be backup generators on the site? Question for Mr. Crowder, I don't know.
Yeah, we we can have that answer for you at for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Holloway.
No additional comments this time.
Very good. At this point, I would like to make it available to comments from the general public. So if we could make that available, I do see at least two hands raised. As a member of the general public, if you have any questions for either the architect or the civil engineer. Who gave testimony tonight, you're welcome to ask questions of those witnesses. And please do so by raising your hand. I will call on you. Please give, please give your name and address and spell your name for the record. And we'll get started. Mr. Hoffker, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
All right, Mr. Brian Wheelock, I see your hand is raised.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please give your name and spell it and your address, please.
Okay, sure. It's Brian Wheelock, W H E E L O C K. And my address is thirty Exeter Street. In Morris Plains and specific, that's the Sedgfield neighborhood right behind the the proposed property here.
Go ahead, sir. What's your question?
Yep. So just just a quarter first, I'm actually right behind Grafton Park. There, I will say I did go down to the town today and I was able to review the plan. So I overall was actually very. Happy and excited to see that you're preserving things like the carriage house and stuff. I think they did it. Went through great lengths to preserve a lot of the the natural elements there. Specifically did have a couple of questions as it relates to, you know, the property. It's being proposed here, the buildings are going to be a little shorter Grafton Park than what is currently. There and that's a great little park that was just finished in the past year and a half. And just wanted to be sure that everything's being done to to preserve the the natural feel in Grafton Park. It looks like some of those big pine trees, evergreen trees along the property line are being removed. I know they're going to be planting some some new ones, but you know, those are like twenty feet, you know, five feet tall now. So it's going to take a long time for those to be, you know, to come back. That was one concern. The other one is about the burn. Height, I know they're going to be cutting back or cutting into the berms. I'm just wondering if the height of that is going to be affected. Is it just the width, I guess, is the other question. This may be for the civil engineering.
Yeah, I can take that, Peter. With regard to the berms, first question, the overall height of burns remains unchanged and actually the. Residential side of that berm remains unchanged. We do have, as you identified, some select grading. Pretty much on the edge of our extended development where we are disturbing some of those slopes. Some trees are being removed, but what we wanted to do is compensate back. Certainly a greater greater ratio than what we were removing. And certainly, you know, during construction, certainly looking for opportunities if we can. To transplant some of the smaller trees. If you're able to do so, just so we maintain the integrity of that first hundred feet to that rear property line.
Right, okay, yeah, just because you know, the proximity to the park there. So some of those big pines are going to be disturbed, obviously. So anything that can be done to just try to, you know, continue to keep that intact. What one concern is that the buildings, I think, right now that are existing are probably, you know, two hundred sixty or seventy feet from the property. Line and now another could be a hundred and thirty five feet or whatever the setback is. So for people walking in those paths in the park, you know, those buildings will be a lot, a lot closer to proximity. So. You know, again, just whatever can be done to to help with that. Somebody else also addressed that, you know, is there, is there a photo or picture of what those buildings will look like from that backside? A rendering of what they'll look like from from your feeling from like the neighborhood, you know, Sedgfield and Grafton Park. Is that something that's available?
We will have, we will have something prepared for the next meeting that shows that.
Okay. Is it a similar architectural as we're seeing from the front or is it going to look pretty much the same same as that or is it going to be different materials and different a different look?
No, it is, the building is consistently detailed on all sides. I actually have. This is an image. From the backside. Looking in now, I don't know that I have all of the landscaping in here, which is why I was hesitant to show this initially. But this shows the character of the back of the building. So this is the T intersection of. Of the building with the bridge connection and the garage access. And I believe we're, you know, I've so this may need a little bit of work and I would all have a. A developed version of this for the next meeting.
Okay, great. I do think you guys did a great, great job in the aesthetics in terms of, you know, what is there right now is obviously not very attractive. It's just it's pushed further back in a way. But the the colors and the tones that you've used, I think, are going to look look great. It's just more the concern of how close it'll be to the. The park and I'm right on the other side of the park. So it'll be a lot closer than, you know, what we're used to back there.
Understood.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheelock. I'm seeing Mark Zarnik, please state and spell your name and give your address, please.
He is unmuted.
Mr. Zarnik. All right, I will come back to you, sir. Nancy Brighton.
Sorry about that. I didn't have the mute off. I apologize.
All right, no problem. Hold off Nancy. We'll get to you next.
I'm sorry, you didn't get any of that. So Mark Zarnik, Zebra, A R N I C K. I'm at twenty two Grafton Drive. I'm in the the north end in the back corner on the right. And one of the questions I have is looking at the. Diagram showing the building, does it come back farther or is it kind of like the same footprint of what's there? With the building extending. Back towards the property line or does it extend back farther?
Just one second, I'm gonna get to my. So here the existing building position. You see that on the screen?
I do.
Yep. And then this is the proposed building. So it comes in approximately the same location of the existing building and then it does encroach a little closer here. Back towards the park within the park.
It's hard to also tell in comparison to the way the building is now, I'm assuming, looking at it, it's going to be a little bit taller.
It may be just a little bit taller. The buildings as proposed are. Below forty five feet. And the forty feet, five feet is measured from average grade around the perimeter of the building. So each building, each building and each portion of the building is designed to comply with the with the ordinance.
What's the current height of the building that's there now? Is it like forty feet or?
I don't, I do not have the exact measurement of the existing building. I know that it's a three and a half to. I know that it's three and a half to, between three and a half and two and a half stories tall. But they're personal stories.
Okay, and then the the landscaping is going to stay the same, I'm gathering on the back end.
Yeah. Ben, Ben can speak further to the landscaping, but wherever possible, we're trying to maintain the, that the mature trees and the buffer zones.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. To supplement what Bruce said there, I know there is a significant berm. You know, it's probably eight to ten feet in that, that back right hand corner, which we are trying to preserve, you know, with our extended disturbance there. And then just supplementing some additional evergreen trees around that perimeter there to that, within that hundred feet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Nancy Brighton.
Nancy Brighton, B R I G H T O N, twenty-four Maplewood Drive. And I'm also the chairperson of the Parsippany Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. So I wanted to thank the team considering the carriage house in their design and to actually looking like you're going to use it the way Glaxasmithkline was going to use it when they renovated, rehabilitated it. Also, thank you for recognizing the water features and the, I think it's a beech tree. Having been over there, we were, it's a very, not only is it old, it's a very unique specimen. And even pictures don't do it justice, because when you go and stand at the base of it, you are actually enveloped by that tree. So it's very special. So the first question is, are you going to develop a special protection plan because both the demolition activities and construction activities are very close to that tree, and that tree has a very wide, very huge what you, you know, it just doesn't have sort of a, that's not just where the branches come out, but that whole base is like part of the tree itself. So that would be the first thing, are you having an extra special protection plan for that because of the activity that comes so close? And I have a second question, so if you want me to go to that. I'm just wanted to while you've gotten those features and the gazebo, which is great that it's going to remain, there's two other features that are not, depending on the status of the living facility. And that was not mentioned was the stone wall, or walls that go as a part of the property. And where the assisted living facility is, is known as the meadow. It's the undeveloped spot. Most of the community, particularly a number of residents who've lived in Parsippany all of their lives, or most of their lives, will tell you that space was meant to never be developed. And there is part, there is an insistence that on that property, there is a conveyance that prevents construction on that, the meadow. And in fact, there's, because it may be in part because there's a sign there right now that says no trespassing, and it has always been empty space. We've been working to find out, find those things. When Glaxasmithkline left, we were doing some research. I've got to check in with some people to see if we ever did pull something about that. But that is on that, what is that, east, northeast corner of that property. That developed space, that meadow. The, the, the story behind that is that was meant not to be developed. And there's something in the property conveyances or a document that, you know, in perpetuity says that will not be developed. For whatever reason, we don't know. But otherwise, so it's, it's understanding what's going on with the wall. The, the development of this, and then action plan for that beech tree.
Just to interject really quickly before Mr. Crowder responds, I just want to state for the record that there's nothing in the title and the conveyances provide any sort of de-destruction for the meadow. We analyzed that issue when we purchased and we're not aware of any such restriction.
Okay.
Mr. Crowder, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. The last two questions, one pertaining to the stone wall. That is anticipated to be preserved along the entire route to, to frontage. I know that's also a structure that, that lives from the, the original estate. There is the potential we may introduce an emergency access point. You probably saw it on some of my exhibits for fire and emergency response to that assisted living facility. Once final plans and we come before this board for final site plan approval, but full intent is to keep that wall entirely in place along that entire right of way. As it relates to the, the tree itself, yes, the, the short answer is yes. When we do have larger specimen trees like the one that's five foot in diameter, the beech tree, we do go out on site as far as defining the limits of the root zone and staking out tree protection fence and other measures. Identify, you know, kind of the extent of disturbance in proximity to that tree, because it's not just to the trunk. And when you have these larger caliber trees that are out there like this specific tree, and actually some of the other trees in close proximity, you appropriately get those, those limited disturbance lines properly staked out.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Nicholas Homyak. Please state and spell your name and give your address.
Nicholas Homyak, H O M Y A K, twenty-six Oneida Avenue in Lake Hiawatha. Is there an ecological impact statement associated with this project? And the the water deficit was mentioned. And are the groundwater recharge requirements under the NJAC seven, eight, five statute, are they being adhered to? Because with the extended impervious surface and the loss of the tree, because I get the impression that one tree, the old beech tree, and the rest of the trees are gonna, are gonna be history. So that's not clear. And if you do take trees in close proximity to that beech tree, they already are probably all intertwined as one organism. So it, it is going to affect that tree. And I'd like an exact reason why the steeps, the slopes have to be disturbed at all. That still isn't completely clear to me. Is there a sidewalk on there, a road, another structure? It's strange. And will, when the demolition of these buildings take place, is everything in place to protect the stream and the ponds from the, the impacts and everything and the disturbances that are going to happen? So it won't affect this water source? So the highest standards of stormwater protection for the site while the construction is going on to protect this water resource? And by the way, does that stream have a name? And what is it connected to?
So.
Yeah, absolutely. That was a lot of questions. So if I forget some of them, just leave mine. Environmental impact statement, we certainly prepared that as part of the application pertaining to any regulated feature or the environmental characteristics and or constraints that we look to preserve around the property. And that included, it's actually an unnamed stream tributary that comes through the site before it gets under Littleton Road. But also assessing anything that's regulated with those water courses and those wetland areas. There currently is a plan that's been filed and recorded with the D E P associated with those, a lot of which lie with the former GSK development. So that was one of the focal points, our, our design intent for, for this project is not only incorporating it into that community sense our architect was talking about, but preserving it. And that includes disturbance or limiting disturbance in those areas. And that directly relates to the, the steep slope, the critical slope disturbance areas. We're really focused on limiting the extent of, say, the impervious and or building locations on this property to really preserve that last one hundred feet at times, the last hundred and twenty-five feet. And just because you have some grade changes throughout the site, you see that on existing conditions today. As you heard, it varies between two and a half and three stories, and that's really as a function of the grading around all components of this existing building. So in order to get that to, work with the ADA flexibility and connectivity for this internal, you know, centralized community, we wanted to stop our disturbance as much as possible around that perimeter, tie back grades as quick as possible. That did get into some of those existing slopes around the perimeter and through that driveway connection that I was describing to the, to the assisted living.
Did the, your impact statement bring out any insight into the possible effects upon the groundwater recharge phenomena?
So as it relates to that specific section of the administrative code, we are in a metropolitan state planning area. So we are exempt from the groundwater recharge criteria. However, what I will tell you is the design of those systems certainly is continuing to promote the water balance, that stream water course through the, the integration of those existing connection points. And there are favorable infiltration rates, you know, based on some of the testing we've done on this project. So a lot of the systems, even some of the non-structural systems do promote that groundwater getting back to the, to the underlying surface.
And will you be responsible for the maintenance of the storm, stormwater components? Or do you have a contractor to do that? And does he have a plan and schedule and course that has been provided?
So with this development, we will be required, and it was also identified in Mr. Holloway's review letter to prepare an operation and maintenance manual. And that basically defines the maintenance responsibilities of the site owner, whether it's the physical owner or a contractor that does the maintenance work themselves. There will be maintenance responsibilities for each of the onsite stormwater facilities on this project. And that's outlined, that's a recorded document, it lives with the property. So as it, as it transfers through, those maintenance responsibilities for those facilities are identified.
And you will honor your statement that you will have the highest standards, the included upgrades, NJDP, or maybe even Highland standards, because we are in the Highlands? The best possible stormwater management that science can, can give us?
Yes, so the regulations just changed last week, but as one of the board members had asked me, certainly we can look for some non-structural strategies that are focused on some of the new green infrastructure strategies that come with the new stormwater guidelines and incorporate those on the property. But as currently submitted, we are fully compliant from township and D E P stormwater criteria.
And, and one last question, I didn't hear exactly why the slopes have to be disturbed. What is the exact reason?
It's, it's basically trying to tie in our site grades to the surrounding grades within those one hundred and one hundred and twenty-five foot areas around the site. You do have some existing landscaped areas around the perimeter based on our extent of some of the parking and the, the parking lot slopes. We're just trying to tie that back quickly so that it focuses on preserving those landscape berms that exist around the perimeter and also limiting any type of disturbance within that green space that's there today in that last one hundred feet.
And what type of vegetation is growing on those slopes right now?
It's anything from seeded lawn. You also have some smaller caliber evergreen trees, and as identified by several board members and some of the public here, there's also some mature trees along the property, which we're trying to preserve and certainly maintain the integrity of the, the existing berms as well, which do have a screening effect.
Okay, so one last question. Besides the giant beech tree, how many other trees that are growing in there now will you be able to save?
I don't have an exact quantity, but I can tell you that when we looked at, you know, roadway alignment and connectivity to that assisted living development, we're looking at a path that required the least amount of tree removal and really focused on preservation of those, those trees, because along with that larger five-foot diameter tree that we're talking about, you walk back through there, there's also several other two, three, four-foot diameter trees that are a big focal point and very key and, you know, have a place in the proposed development as enjoyment by the residents.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your questions and, and for the very good answers at this time. I think we do want to get this wrapped up. So Nora, let's, let's go ahead and close up the public portion. And with that said, all witnesses will be available and open to the public at the conclusion of the next presentation.
That's correct, Chairman.
Yeah. Nora, we need another date for the continuation of this presentation.
Okay, we are carrying this to May seventeenth, and really quickly, for those people in the public who are calling users and found you could not raise your hand to comment, please call me in upcoming weeks. So we can go over, you know, what the issue might be, what, what you're not doing correct to be able to participate.
Thanks for saying that, Nora. I, I'm sorry if, if any of you couldn't get your, your questions in and to Nora's point, let's, let's see if we can get you in next time. Thank you everybody for your time.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just really quickly, is it possible to schedule us in April? I know that the board has a busy schedule, but I'm not sure if that's possible.
I'm totally booked. That's why I gave you the first available date.
Understood. All right, thank you.
I apologize.
And just to confirm too, no further notice would be required for the next hearing?
That, that's correct.
Thank you.
And you're going to grant any required extensions, correct?
That's correct. And I can send a letter to that effect, Mr. Shully.
Thank you.
That's what I was gonna ask.
That's, I was just gonna ask Mr. Flannery to consent to extend the time.
Excellent. Have we have, do we have our i's, t's, and t's crossed at this point, Mr. Wenzel?
As far as I can tell, Mr. Chairman, we have, and we should be prepared to proceed next hearing date in May, when it will be nice and warm.
Oh, that'll be nice. All right. Thank you, Mr. Flannery, for you, for your presentation so far and for all your witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that said, I'll accept the motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Do you have a second? All right, all in favor? Thank you everybody for your time today. I apologize for the lateness of the hour, but I appreciate all of you so much. So have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.